It's five o'clock, so welcome to the May eighteenth Select Board Meeting. This is a posted joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the School Committee. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker to protect public health during the COVID-19 outbreak, the May eighteenth Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and Select Board members, FinCom members, and School Committee members will be calling in by telephone. This, by telephone on Zoom. This meeting is being livestreamed and cable broadcast by Eastern Community Access Television Comcast ninety-eight slash Verizon twenty-three, and on ECAT's website at www.eastencat.org. If you're watching this at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email M Blanchard, as in Michael Blanchard, at easton.ma.us, or pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. We're going to begin this meeting with a proclamation, and then we're going to go right into the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and School Committee. After Connor makes his presentation, I will invite the Finance Committee to ask questions, then the School Committee, then the Select Board. After all, the Board members have finished their questions and comments, I will invite members of the public to ask their questions or comments as well. I'd ask that you please use the raise hand feature in the Q and A section, and I'll recognize you and read your question from the public. The Board members will all be able to speak their own questions on camera. Please remember to state your name and address for the minutes. After this part of the meeting is over, we're going to take a three-minute break, and then we'll resume the rest of the presentation. So, hold on one second. All right. The first item on the agenda is an announcement and proclamation regarding the VFW Post twenty-five forty-seven for Commander Al Smart. We have Cory Honan on the phone, on the Zoom call. I keep saying on the phone, sorry about that. And Cory, if you just want to give us a little bit of background on this, Cory is our Veteran Services Officer.
Yes, hi, everybody. My name is Cory Honan, Veteran Service Officer. You know, I've been kind of working with Al since I started here in March twenty eighteen. Al Smart is the VFW Commander, and he organizes and runs the parades for the town, has been doing so for over twenty years. So, I thought it was a great opportunity that we should take to thank him as he is moving out of state at the end of the month, and will no longer be the VFW Commander.
Okay. Well, the Board really would like to recognize Al and the generous contributions that you've made to the town. And I'm going to read this proclamation, and then we will get this to you before you move. Whereas Alvin Smart has shown remarkable dedication and selfless service to the town of Easton as the Veterans of Foreign Wars VFW Post twenty-five forty-seven Commander for the past twenty-four years. And whereas Alvin Smart has also served as American Legion Post Seven Past Commander among various executive board positions for both veteran service organizations. And whereas during his tenure as VFW Commander, was responsible for the dedication of many street signs and squares of the men and women of Easton who served in uniform. And whereas Alvin Smart has been responsible for organizing the town of Easton's Memorial Day and Veterans Day parades. And whereas Mr. Smart has been instrumental in the design, development, and maintenance of many of our town's monuments, including Veterans Memorial Park. And whereas Technical Sergeant Alvin B. Smart is a retiree of the United States Air Force with over twenty years of service, including a deployment to Riyadh, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce this, Riyadh, Saudi Arabia during Operation Desert Storm. Therefore, be it proclaimed that due recognition and attention of the residents of Easton be drawn to the outstanding service provided by, provided to our community by one of Easton's legends. And be it further proclaimed that we, the undersigned Select Board of the Town of Easton, do hereby offer our sincere gratitude to Alvin B. Smart for his years of dedicated service to our veterans and the community at large, given under our hand this seal the eighteenth day of May in our year of the Lord two thousand and twenty. So, Al, if you're on the call, would you like to make a couple of comments?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, good. I just want to thank all these Eastern Selectmen for supporting the veterans over all these years, for everything you've done and everything that we've asked for. You've done that, and we really appreciate that. And I hope that people coming forward will continue to do the things for the town of Easton and the veterans in need. So again, thank you. Thank you, Cory. Thank you, Craig, Tom, Mark, and Dottie for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and we appreciate everything that you've done for our community, Al, and we wish you great success as you start your next venture.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We're gonna miss you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Very much.
I'm gonna miss the town and all the people, but it's something that I have to do. A lot of things have come up, and it's just one of those things.
Best of luck to you, Commander.
Thank you all. I'll see you at the Beanery.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Al.
All right, thank you.
Okay, for this next part of the meeting, for the joint meeting, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum. Then I'll ask the FinCom Chair to open their meeting by their members announcing themselves, and then do the same for the School Committee. So, Craig, if you'd like to start.
Yep, Craig Barger.
Tom Gressard.
Chuck King.
Mark Lamb.
And Dottie Full Genetti. I'm turning it over to you, Patrick. Is Patrick Helen on the call? I'm trying to look.
Yeah, Mike is moving the fourteen others over.
Yeah.
We'll hang on while we invite all the members into the video.
Hey, guys, can you hear us now?
Good.
Yep.
Here we are. Thanks for the Zoom invite. Patrick Helen. I think we've got other people filtering in. For, for the Finance Committee, you will have to unmute yourself and start your video if you want to be recognized and heard.
I want to be recognized and heard. It's for Bert of Vertville.
Jamie Stebbins.
Jennifer Stasing.
Davis Healy.
Jeremy Timalio.
I think Tim is also on, or he's trying to get on. He might have tried to reset. That should be the vast majority of us, though.
Okay. All right, yeah. Tim is on the call. And for the School Committee.
Hey, Nancy DeLuca.
Caroline O'Neill.
Michelle Durant.
Jackie Wiseman.
Jen Starr.
Okay, terrific. Connor, turning it over to you.
Thank you, Dottie. So, I have a presentation based off of a memo that I provided to the elected officials that are in this meeting. It mirrors information that I presented on April twenty-first. I'm going to try and be able to get through these slides in about fifteen to twenty minutes so that there's plenty of time for questions with all the Board. The town of Easton, along with Massachusetts, the nation, and the entire world, is facing a historic recession brought on by the worst public health crisis in a century, unprecedented in its speed and unrivaled in the scale of joblessness and economic disruption since the Great Depression. In the span of only two months, thirty-six million Americans have lost their jobs. More than one million residents of Massachusetts have lost their job. And unemployment in Easton is over twenty-three percent today. Tremendous uncertainty remains about the duration of a recession and what the eventual recovery could look like. But generally, outlooks from a variety of experts, including the Congressional Budget Office, Standard and Poor's, Moody's, and the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation, forecast that the coming fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one will resemble, if not surpass, the worst years of the Great Recession. Even baseline reports from many experts, including the Congressional Budget Office, forecast that unemployment in the United States will remain at or above ten percent until the end of calendar year two thousand and twenty-one. Public services, although not as immediately and quickly as the hardest-hit sectors in the economy, such as hospitality and restaurants, are nonetheless vulnerable to material revenue shortfalls that are induced by recessions. Easton's financial profile, a mature suburb with limited commercial and overwhelmingly residential tax base, significant amounts of preserved and tax-free open space, no sewer infrastructure to generate commercial growth until very recently, a minimum aid school district that receives marginal support, if not cuts, in available funding from the Commonwealth on an annual basis, and having only passed two operating overrides since Prop Two and a Half's enactment in nineteen ninety-one and two thousand and seven, makes the town particularly vulnerable to significant regional and national economic downturns. So while families in Easton and across the globe are enduring unthinkable hardship, personal and financial loss, and unprecedented isolation, it's difficult for all of us to turn our focus to town finances. However, so much of the critical aspects of responding to the coronavirus falls on us and the local government, whether that's through public safety and public health, or education and social emotional wellness for children. And so, we have to take account for our financial capabilities to deliver those services, regardless of what's happening in the economy. Town leaders highlighted the revenue vulnerabilities that I just touched on over the past decade, with a major focus in two thousand and sixteen when an operational override was designed to address those challenges and was put before voters. The message from that election was clear. It was a two-to-one defeat of the proposition that additional revenue was necessary to preserve and protect our essential services. As a town government, school district, and a community, we have been carving away at core essential service expenses, first on the margins, and then eventually by reducing services and staff positions in more recent years to address a structural revenue deficit that we've had since the last recession. Although the town has achieved savings in health insurance, energy policy, departmental reorganizations, and conservative wage packages with our labor unions, a necessary outcome of such pursuits is that operating budgets in Easton run extraordinarily lean, which leaves them in a weaker position to weather a major recession today than they were in in two thousand and eight. Despite progress in improving our financial position in the previous four years, where we've doubled our stabilization fund balance and cut our reliance on reserves in the operating budget in half, our reserve position today is still weaker than it was when we headed into the last recession. Accordingly, the task before us today is in many respects one of more consequence and seriousness than those already grave challenges presented to the town and the community in two thousand and eight. This recession is unique in that it is predicated on a health crisis, which was called upon our public servants to protect public health, safety, and educational development in ways never before accomplished or contemplated. We're all proud of our employees who've risen to these challenges and to this occasion to meet the call striving to deliver critical services to the public with compassion, resiliency, and grace during an extraordinarily difficult time for everyone. It's with regret that those efforts don't absolve the town, its employees, or the citizens that we serve from having to confront this financial crisis and to produce a balanced budget in the face of historic revenue projections. Tonight, I'm going to summarize the financial challenges that we face, identify guiding principles and methods for addressing them, and lay out the next steps for all of us as we work together towards balancing the budget, which we must do. The next couple of slides are going to broadly summarize revisions to revenue and expense projections since the last budget was issued in February. The changes to revenues and expenses are still so far off from producing a balanced budget, and the deficit's so massive that spending any significant time addressing our operational capacities at those spending levels is basically fruitless as they need to be cut significantly more, excuse me. So first, let's talk about revenue. Fiscal twenty-one revenue projections have been cut by one million eight hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars from a preliminary budget in February. Our current revenue forecast represents a marginal increase of just over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is about half of a percent over fiscal twenty levels, with the only category growing being taxation, for a total projected general fund revenue of eighty-two million dollars. Projected cuts to state aid and local receipts from fiscal twenty levels of one million and half a million respectively are modeled off of actual losses in revenue experienced by Easton following declines in tax revenue collections to the state of Massachusetts during the last recession. More broadly, these projections are built on forecasts that Massachusetts' tax revenue in fiscal twenty-one will fall about four and a half billion dollars short of their initial projections. That's a shortfall of about fourteen percent. That four-point-four billion-dollar shortfall in state tax collections is itself based on a Moody's March outlook. Many of the economic indicators contained in that outlook have actually worsened significantly. For just one example, that March outlook estimated a drop in employment of eight million jobs. The United States has currently shed thirty-six million jobs. I'm pointing this out to make the point that these forecasts that I'm using, put together by outside experts, are not worst-case scenarios. It's also important to note that while there are conversations happening now in Massachusetts and in Washington regarding loosening restrictions on CARES funding or for an additional federal stimulus package for cities and towns, none of that can be accounted for or assumed unless and until such time as they're enacted into law and that money is transferred to local governments. So our revenue assumptions are going to be refined if and when more information on that front becomes available. On the expense side, fiscal twenty-one expense projections have been cut by four hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars since the first budget in February. Total expenses in fiscal twenty-one are projected to increase by just shy of three million dollars, which is about three and a half percent over fiscal twenty levels. As is typical fixed costs are the major drivers for our expense growth, with employee benefits and insurance projected to increase by just under five percent, and regional county school assessments growing by about nine percent. Thankfully, a projected snow and ice deficit of one hundred thousand dollars did not materialize, and so we were able to eliminate that from our budget. Town and school departments are currently projected to increase by about a half million and one-point-four million dollars respectively. These are about two-point-nine and three-point-four percent each. These department budget requests have been reduced by a hundred and fifty-six thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars respectively since February, and they represent level staff budgets with no service improvements, no reactive service needs being met, and other expenditure cuts. In short, these are bare-bones budgets that fund only our contractual increases. Unfortunately, even with such lean operating budgets, our projected revenue shortfall leaves us with an adjusted budget deficit of two million four hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars. We've successfully addressed budget deficit projections in the area of one to two million dollars before, but this is unique for a couple of reasons. It already contemplates the use of half of our free cash that's on hand. Department budgets have already been reduced to the minimum, and we're only five weeks away from an already-delayed town meeting. In response to these unprecedented challenges, the fiscal twenty-one budget should take care to minimize service cuts to core essential services to the extent possible so as to not worsen the economic hardship facing those who rely on our services or the dedicated public servants who deliver them. However, the current revenue forecasts indicate that balancing the budget without significant service reductions is effectively impossible. Understanding as much, our financial team's going to endeavor over the next five weeks to produce a balanced budget, though prioritize the preservation of critical technical, operational, and strategic capacity for our town government to meet our public safety, health, works, and operations management needs. Other functions in town government will likely need to be reduced in capacity if they continue to exist at all. The town is already understaffed in most of our departments, and so we are going to try to prioritize the preservation of personnel to the extent possible, given the revenue available. However, making any meaningful progress in this area is going to require a collective approach of our unions and management to consider wage freezes, departmental reorganizations, and other methods to reduce operational spending without first resorting to layoffs and eliminating jobs. Finally, balancing the budget is going to necessitate the use of stabilization funds. We've been here before, and our past experience has shown us that we have to resist the urge to spend too much of our reserve capacity in a single year because we're going to need to draw down on these reserves in numerous successive difficult years if we're to weather this financial storm. So the preservation of essential functions in the fiscal twenty-one town budget is going to be prioritized, understanding that prioritizing those functions does not make any of those departments immune from budget cuts. Generally, priority essential functions are those which promote and protect public safety, public health, and public works. In order to support those functions, operations, financial, inspectional, and capital asset management functions must continue to operate. Finally, governmental legitimacy flows directly from the electorate, and accordingly, we must strive to protect and preserve election administration, public records, support for citizen boards and committees with statutory and regulatory authority, and other key transparency capabilities so as not to minimize the public's ability to scrutinize, understand, and participate in their own government, much like the folks who are watching this now are doing. We'll endeavor to preserve all of our other services at the best level that we can. Unfortunately, there will need to be cuts. Our departments are simply too lean to offer an alternative. Following years of proactive shifts to technology-based services for many administrative services such as bill payment, e-permitting, and public records on demand, the town is well-positioned to offer a significant amount of our services remotely without the necessity of in-person office hours. In response to the COVID crisis, like many others, we have been able to successfully reduce in-person office hours while preserving a majority of our administrative service delivery capabilities remotely. When the phase reopening of office environments across the Commonwealth begins, our office hours will likely remain curtailed due to the potential for reduced staff levels or hours. Alternative technology-based services for bill pay, permits, records, and other administrative services do not necessitate in-person transactions, nor the full-time personnel who currently serve them. Although technology can replace much of the need for in-person transactions, it obviously cannot take place of it entirely, and those services must continue to exist even in a reduced capacity, although there will likely be slower response times for certain customer service transactions. However, we simply don't have the capability to reduce front-facing staff positions or hours and expect those personnel who remain to simply absorb the work of two or three people. Easton is a wonderful community. There's incredible open space and historical resources here, coupled with incredible programmatic offerings from recreation, council on aging, the library, and more. However, maintaining the current program level during this crisis is not possible. Priority will be given to programs that provide critical subsistence and financial support to vulnerable populations, such as meals on wheels, medical transportation, and veterans' benefits. Likely reductions include having library funding at the minimum allowed by state law. Recreational and town-sponsored community programs for residents of all ages have already been significantly reduced for public health reasons in the short term in response to the COVID crisis, and will likely remain reduced from twenty-twenty levels for the foreseeable future due to the economic crisis. These changes will be difficult, and obviously, as all of you can tell, I'm reading from prepared remarks. It is creating close to physical pain for me to read through them because I believe in what all these departments do. But they're driven by financial necessities. These are not reflections of a value that these programs create for the community. Kristin Kennedy and I are drafting a comprehensive reorganization plan for the Department of Health and Community Services to preserve and prioritize those critical services devoted to public health and support for vulnerable populations, and that'll be incorporated into a later budget change memo. These priorities are consistent with the Select Board's statements of value. They're consistent with our statutory obligations as a municipal government, and they're consistent with the realities that we're facing right now due to this pandemic and the recession. They represent a pivot of our general government service model away from one that's typified by in-person, customer-service-heavy departments towards a leaner delivery model using technology and remote services where we can to preserve the essential services where we must. Frankly, this pivot was likely coming at some point, whether or not brought on by a crisis. And continuing to attempt to provide customer service on a model long abandoned by contemporary business is not responsible or possible, given the financial pressure we're already under every year and the grim reality brought on by this COVID crisis. The revised deficit stands at two million four hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars. Even with the items that I've outlined so far, more effort's going to be needed to close a deficit of that size, and so additional measures at a minimum should include the following. We're going to need to tap additional reserve fund use. The deficit that I'm speaking about at almost two-point-five million already has nine hundred thousand dollars of reserves in the revenue category. So, a more accurate way to look at that is a three-point-four million-dollar shortfall. Although we already have nine hundred thousand dollars of reserves baked into that number, the scale of the challenge that we're facing is going to necessitate more. So we will need to use stabilization funds to help close the gap in fiscal twenty-one, but again, we have to be cautious as this is going to likely be true for fiscal twenty-two and fiscal twenty-three. We will be adjusting our insurance budget to reflect insurance cost savings as we're currently projecting a reduction of roughly one hundred thousand dollars in the insurance line item due to incentive plans that we've had in place for a few years to try to encourage employees to pick more cost-effective plans. We need to reassess regional, county, and state assessments. These are in the fixed cost category. We don't have a tremendous amount, if any, of control over them in the immediate term, but the circumstances were in demand that we had these conversations. We've already opened up communication with the Southeastern Regional School, in particular regarding their budget request, which is an increase of almost eight percent over the prior year to see if that could be reduced to the fullest extent possible. We need to continue to advocate for federal financial support. The CARES Act, covered significantly in the media, the two-point-two trillion-dollar stimulus, included a hundred and fifty billion dollars for state and local government response costs related to COVID. These funds are restricted to expenses not budgeted when that law was enacted on March twenty-seventh, and cannot be used to substitute for lost revenue. It's really important because there is media coverage around the CARES Act and the funding for cities and towns and schools that makes it seem that there's just a check we could take and move into this deficit column and take care of this. There are significant restrictions on those funds. I wish it were that easy, and it is not. Additional unrestricted financial support from the federal government, including direct support to offset revenue losses, will be critical for cities and towns around the country if they are to preserve service levels. Advancements achieved on expanding CARES eligibility or any additional unrestricted federal aid, if any, will be accounted for in future memos. More efforts above those will be necessary if we're to meet the guiding principles of preserving operational capacity, which comes directly from our employees. If we are to preserve the maximum number of jobs possible, concessions will be necessary from our labor partners. Last week, I briefed the town's union leaders on the severity of the challenges that we're facing, as did Superintendent Dr. Cabral of the school unions, to open dialogue about possible solutions to reduce expenses where we can to protect as many jobs and services as we can. As we open those difficult conversations with our labor unions seeking concessions to meet a financial challenge that is no fault of theirs, Dr. Cabral and I have taken a wage freeze as the same expectation should be applied to all of us. All non-union personnel will be programmed for fiscal twenty-one at the same wage freeze. Any concessions accepted by unions will be incorporated into future budget adjustments and will reduce the deficit accordingly. We have five weeks to eliminate this deficit and balance the budget if we are to meet the law. Revised budget memos will follow at each Select Board meeting, and if the June twenty-second town meeting, five weeks from now, does not occur due to public health concerns, the fiscal twenty-one budget will continue into the coming, our budget will continue into the coming fiscal year at its current level, and what that's basically equivalent to is a zero increased budget. So as significant and painful as the challenges that I just walked through are, if we do not have town meeting on the twenty-second and do not adopt this budget, which assumes about a half percent revenue increase, we'll actually have about four hundred and thirty thousand fewer dollars to work with, and we'll be working with a zero. The challenge before all of us is great. I'm thankful for the team we have here in Easton and the organization, the elective leadership that we have, and I'm thankful for everyone in the community who's been doing the right things since March to fight this virus, slow the spread, and to take care of their families and their neighbors. The resolve we've seen from everyone is going to need to continue to seal us to some really, really difficult days ahead. And despite the COVID crisis, we are legally required to produce a balanced budget, and it's not going to be easy, but working together, we will weather this. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
So if you could start, Patrick, on the Finance Committee. If you want to start with the Finance Committee questions. If you are on the committee, probably the most organized way to do this would be to use the raise your hand feature or to send a Q and A just so we know who will speak next, and then Patrick can call on people to speak. So that way, everyone will get an opportunity.
So I'll start, and if anyone else has any questions. I think Dottie's suggestion of putting it into the Q and A is great, and then I can just call on you afterwards. I'm not sure if there is an option for this, but I was just curious if there is any sort of option at all for town meeting with the ongoing physical distancing that is required or suggested. I don't know what the exact bylaw is associated with how that vote has to take place, but I'm assuming it's not something that can be done remotely. And it, I'm sure, can't be done with the extent of the budget and the questions that will probably come up from a written standpoint. But I'm just curious if there are any mitigating options that we have.
Sure. So we cannot have town meeting remotely because we're in open-town meeting form of government. There has been a legislative relief package introduced. I do not believe it has been signed yet. It would allow remote town meeting for representative town meetings. But the relief available to open-town meeting forms of government would be to reduce your quorum to 10% of normal. So in our case, that would be to reduce quorum to 10. In theory, that could help with the public health aspect, but quorum is obviously just a minimum number of people. You could still have 100 or 200, and planning for that is difficult. Danielle and I and many others are working on planning for that now. You could, in theory, have a town meeting outdoors. You could have it in a different room and have different spacing options. So we are working on that actively. If we can have town meeting safely, we intend to. And we're working with moderator and town council on that. But as far as remote, no, that is not legal for us to do.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the Finance Committee have any other questions?
And Patrick, it's Jamie. And Connor, then, I'm just thinking Stonehill College. Given that we know that space is most likely going to be available in June again, and we've seen, just given the numbers that turned out last fall, is that a space you're looking into?
I'm not, because that took almost six months to coordinate that logistically. And I don't think we can reasonably expect to do that with such a short window this time. It's counter-ethical, but the intent behind that legislation of reducing quorum, in theory, is to reduce the number of people needed to conduct a town meeting. None of us are in the business of usually discouraging people to turn out, right? That's not what you want. But as far, logistically, it would be... I would be over-promising if I felt I could guarantee another remote town meeting at Stonehill on the short notice. Well, we're looking into it, but I'm uncertain that that's doable in this time period.
Thank you.
One follow-up question that I thought of, which is around this 1/12 budget. That's assuming there has not been a town meeting, correct? Is there provisions within that that if, if in July, if in August, there's some sort of option for be it remote, be it representative, whatever that option might become, or in-person with some serious rules around, at that point, can that town meeting be taken and that budget to be effectively unlocked? Or is it this, is the timeframe itself, even with the delay, it has to be done before a specific time within the beginning of the fiscal?
No, if you, if we don't have a town meeting by the end of this fiscal year in June and we use the 1/12 budgeting, you can still adopt fiscal twenty-one budget at any point after the fiscal year begins. So in theory, if things are doing better in July or August, you could have a town meeting to adjust the budget. And we likely will, under any circumstance. The level of volatility economically that we're seeing, we'll probably have to make adjustments at the fall town meeting, no matter what.
Anyone else from the Finance Committee that has any questions?
Yeah, it's Jeremy Tumilio. I have a question. So you talked about the insurance costs being about $100,000 lower than you were anticipating. I was just hoping for a little clarification on that because I feel like at our last meeting, we had talked about the insurance costs being higher than we had as a placeholder. So I'm mixing up two things, or has something changed?
You are not. So let me pull up the summary here. So what, it's a good question. There's a couple of different pieces there. So when we had a preliminary budget in February, we had put a placeholder for a 5% increase to premium costs for our insurance premiums. We had hoped it would be less than that because in prior years, the actual rate of premium increases for the GIC had been less than 5% quite, by quite a bit. Some of the plans for fiscal twenty-one are going up by significantly more than 5%. But the total budget increase is based on a function of the plan premium and the enrollment. As far, because some plans may go up 8%, some may go down 5, and we have 12 plans. And so what we've been doing for a few years is trying to encourage employees to consider more cost-effective plans by giving cash bonuses, basically. If you're in one of the more costly plans during open enrollment, which right now is during the months of April and May. If you switch from one of those more costly plans to one of the more cost-effective ones, we will give you a check for part of the savings, and the town keeps the other part of the savings. So the total aggregate premium came in higher than we had hoped for the GIC plans. But through the local incentive planning that we've been doing, we think we can safely reduce the budget by 100,000 to reflect people moving to more cost-effective plans.
Okay, thank you. And then just a quick follow-up. You know, I've been seeing reports about huge premium increases expected as a result of, you know, mass hospitalizations, mass testing that insurance companies have to, they can't have any cost-sharing measures. So is that something we would expect to see on this budget, you know, as a future budget amendment or update that you're talking about? Or would that be next year's fiscal budget?
I have never seen the GIC change their rates for the coming fiscal year after they've released them. So those rates have already been set.
Okay, so we're set for the next 12 months.
But I, full disclosure, I'm not expert enough in the GIC regulations to say with certainty that they cannot change in the coming fiscal year. I haven't heard that. I'll look into it and make sure. But for now, the information we have available does not indicate that those premiums are to change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good questions.
Anyone else, or we'll turn it back over to, is the Select Board up next, I believe, Dottie?
No, we're going to do the School Committee next. So if there's no one else from FinCom going once, going twice. We're going to turn this over to Nancy DeLuca. And I also wanted to just mention that we have other people on the panelists. Dr. Cabral from the Superintendent of Schools is on the call. And so are the Business Agents Marilyn Gordon and our Finance Director Wendy Nightingale. They're available also for questions. So Nancy, if you want to take it away and...
I am here. I do not have any questions at this point, but I asked if, I texted my committee and told them to see if they had any questions. I haven't heard from anybody yet. So I'm gonna pass for now.
Anyone else on the School Committee?
Dottie?
Yeah, Caroline?
Caroline, sorry, Nancy, I just wasn't looking at texts. I just wanted to make a comment, which is that when I read Connor's presentation, I guess, yesterday, I was really blown away by its comprehensiveness. And I just thought that it was about as good a presentation as any town manager or mayor or, you know, any leader of a community could possibly have created. And I really, I'm sure that you all share my just incredible feeling of being impressed about the presentation. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Caroline. I think we all share in that, you know, it's not great news. And one of the things that we really have to focus on is the data. And the more information that we have down to this level, the better it will be as we have to go through and make some of these really tough decisions.
No question. It's extremely sobering, but at least it's really comprehensive, and that will help us a lot, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Anyone else on the School Committee? Okay, we'll go to the... And, you know, if somebody on FinCom or School Committee has another question and they want to interject as we go along, we'll do one more pass-through for everyone at the end before we go to questions from the general public. So let me start with you, Craig, if you want to make any comments or questions.
I just have one question for Connor about some of the county and state assessments and whether or not there is ability within the law to be able to negotiate those kind of costs given this crisis.
Not that I'm aware of, not typically, no. So for anyone watching who doesn't read Municipal Finance for Fun, what Craig's referring to is assessments that the town and all municipalities get from the Commonwealth and from counties. Those are basically bills we get given every year, and they have to be paid. It's not negotiable. We don't control the budgetary cost. That includes stuff most significantly recently, like charter school assessments, regional school assessments, mosquito assessments for county mosquito control, and things like that. And so those costs typically grow significantly more on a percentage basis annually than our costs over which we have control. And it creates a lot of pressure on us. We only have a fixed amount of revenue growth every year, and our assessments are going up three, four, five, six, seven, or more percent. In the case of charter schools last year, 50%. And we can only afford 2% or 3% increases for the schools and town departments. So no, we don't have a formal ability to negotiate. But as I said, we have reached out not only to the regional school, as have most of our neighbors who receive significant increases from the Regional School tied to the Student Opportunity Act. We have contacted the county pension system. The increased pension assessments every year are based on actuarial studies, based on assumptions about market returns, which are safe to say are not going to happen as they had projected. So my kind of unscientific view there is you're not going to get 8% from the market compared to last year. Don't ask us for 8%. I'll let you know if I'm successful there, but I don't think I will be. And we're approaching all of the other regional assessments, like the mosquito control as well, even for things as small as whether or not capital items built into their need to happen in the coming year. So the short answer is no, we don't have a formal renegotiating capability. The long answer is we're doing everything we can to try to influence that outcome.
Thank you, Connor.
Connor, I echo, great job. I appreciate pulling all the data and information together. Being as informed as possible, I think, will help us as a community get to the best place possible in these trying circumstances. As unexpected, most likely, I do have some questions. One, in terms of the state aid, I believe the stat that's referenced is that we're currently modeling a decrease of 14.1% in terms of state collections. And we have our state aid decreasing by 8.2%. I believe the reference is that that's what we saw the last time we were in this situation loosely. But I guess my concern is that if the state receipts are declining at a faster rate than we've modeled our state aid, that we might be at risk at that particular number. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, I agree with you, and you're correct. We may be. Part of what's so difficult about this situation is that the state has made clear that they will not be adopting a fiscal twenty-one budget by the end of this fiscal year. So we need to rely on modeling and forecast, which we always do to an extent, but to a greater extent now than before. I'm sticking, and Wendy and I are sticking with those numbers for now because there hasn't been anything more recent that's reached the level of formal testimony to the state lawmakers. We may revise it, and hopefully not in the coming weeks in a worse direction. But if more information comes out from the state that points in that direction, that is what we'll do. We've also, in addition to the kind of modeling approach, we've taken stock of where our neighbors are at. And everyone's financial circumstances are quite different, but there, we see folks projecting cuts in state aid next year as significant as 15 or 20%, which is far worse than what we're forecasting right now. Their revenue profiles are different than ours, and they can afford to take such grim projections. And in the case of one of our neighbors, they'll just not put $1 million in their OPEB trust. For us, $1 million is 20 jobs. So I'm being a little bit more cautious on that. So it could get revised to the negative, though. And that's part of why I included that note, Tom, that you were correct. That the forecasts here are based off of assumptions that so far seem to be panning out worse. I didn't want, I didn't feel comfortable at this time kind of moving from modeling off of what was testified to at the state level into more proprietary assumptions on our level, particularly because it's going to be so difficult and painful just to meet this outlook. But we're doing it with eyes open, including speaking with our labor partners, that it could be worse.
Yep. And to clarify, when you say the assumptions, the, what I believe you're saying is that the assumptions we used here, to your point earlier, are not the most conservative.
Correct. These are not worst-case scenario forecasts at all. I don't know if Wendy wants to add to that. We did, Tom, you did, when we went into that April 21st meeting, Wendy and I had a conversation about the one-point difference that you identified that's now here and whether or not that should be the case. And we did go back and clarify and put that math there to line that up. So this is slightly more conservative on that front. The reason this deficit is smaller than the forecasted one with 28th is we've cut almost a half million in expenses since then. But Wendy, I mean, you were, you have the benefit of, you were the town's accountant for the past two major recessions. So do you want to just speak to that a little bit about your perspective? Because one of the things that you'll hear, and we will hear, is we have to make difficult decisions based on forecasting, for some, is, well, why don't we just wait? Just go with the governor's budget. The governor's budget said you'll get 2% increase. Just, that's the last formal thing. Go with that. What's the harm? So Wendy, you want to just talk about that and talk about your experience there and what's informing this?
Right. So the last time around, we did get a significant cut. But we got cut over several years. So that first year, we got cut $1 million. But we were fortunate that it was replaced with stimulus money. But then, the next two successive years, we had significant cuts in state aid. And as Connor said in his other memos, it took eight years for us to get back to that, just to that dollar amount.
And so I think, for context, those other communities that have the benefit of scheduling down 15% to 16% on this line item, that's nearly double what we have at minus 8.4 or 8.2%. And so in theory, that could be another $1 million or delta if we had the ability to schedule, as other communities have, and be more conservative in line with the, in the state receipts. So I think I'm just highlighting the fact that it would, minus 8% seems, again, if anything, middle of the road.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. And if, as we move into summer and fall, the state does adopt a budget, or, you know, what we've been asking for through MMA is, even if you don't adopt a budget, can you just give us a goalpost? Right? To set, some expectation setting would go a long way. And if that happens, we will have to adjust the budget. And if it's down, then we will have to cut deeper.
Right. And so in a worst-case scenario, just in terms of my timing, I believe you answered this earlier. If we did have a material reduction in terms of what we receive from the state versus what we budgeted, would that be a, we attempt to course correct on the fly? And/or we have to find a different spend level or opportunity at the fall town meeting?
We would, we would need to do a couple of things administratively. I am able to take certain steps absent the Select Board or town meeting, many of which we already have done. Spending freezes, not authorizing capital purchases, hiring freezes for vacant positions to try to generate excess allocations that are not being encumbered and spent. If there was a significant change in the Change in the state revenue from what we are projecting, we would need to go to town meeting. To formally adjust the budget downward, but we would begin taking steps immediately to adjust our personnel levels and spending levels in advance of that town meeting. Knowing what that revenue would be.
Recognizing this is going to probably be a long game of inches to try to find areas of opportunity. Given how aggressive we've been on the expense side. On the local receipts for the motor vehicle excise tax, I noticed that we modeled only a three point four percent decline. I understand the meals tax decline of twenty five percent. Wendy, is there any knowledge of the last time we had a recession and what the purchases of new vehicles declined by and therefore what its impact might be?
I don't, I don't have that, those exact numbers. But I will say that in terms of, you know, this year's collections. Right now, I'm just hoping that we're going to meet our budget. We budgeted like three point eight million and we're about three point six now. People have until the end of the fiscal year to to pay. Last year, we took in four million. I'm just hoping that we're going to meet the budget, which is, which was less, so we wanted to reduce that because. You know, based on what we're seeing this year, with everything, you know, potentially being so much worse next year. Auto sales were down significantly. That we felt that an additional reduction was going to be necessary.
I agree, I I might argue it, it might not be enough, but I hope. More than it is. In terms of the retirement assessment and you mentioned OPEB. That is there any opportunity for us in any discretion? In terms of those OPEB contributions or retirement assessments? If I remember correctly, our county, we were not too far off, or we were doing better than most, I might have, I might say.
Yes.
But is there any discretion in any of those allocations Connor? Well, I certainly do not want to stop items like that. That take care of future needs, I am sensitive to the fact that we have some pretty important current ones that we're making decisions on.
Yeah, that's a great question and. You are correct, the Bristol County retirement system was on track to be fully funded, Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, by two thousand twenty eight for all actuarial liabilities, which is quite good. And at least twelve years ahead of a statutory requirement of twenty forty. So that was one of the first things. I did in March was. Ask Wendy to get a hold of PERAC and Bristol County to ask if they can. If they have discretion to move out that full funding target date, which would then obviously decrease the annual contributions we need to make to play catch up. Wendy, but was, is it fair to summarize if I basically said, we are open to that idea, but we need a new actuarial study before we can do it and vote on it, and that will be what, twelve months from now?
Hopefully to be less than twelve months from now, typically they would be expecting that report to come out in July. But but because of everything, and they've got a new actuary this year also. So that probably will be more likely in the fall. They they would, the the board can vote to extend that. But I would think that. It's going to take some member communities to, you know, come in and request that. Because one of the other things that they also took up is there was an option. For some communities, we we get that discount because we pay the pension assessment upfront. At the beginning of the fiscal year rather than in two semi annual payments, and we save ninety thousand dollars by doing that. One of the things that PERAC had said was that if, you know, communities. Retirement systems wanted, they could have the option. Of basically still letting communities pay in two semi annual installments and still giving them that discount. But Bristol County voted not to do that at this time.
Which does not bode well, but there, so if they have this meeting in fall, Tom, they are a public board, I will be there, I'm sure you will be too.
Right, I appreciate if you could just keep that on our radar screen, I think.
Absolutely will.
To your point, I I as much as we are focused on this year appropriately, so I think that this is something we have to also try to understand the multi year. Implications of what we're doing, and if we can find a little bit of opportunity in in next year or the year after, I think that would be helpful. Two other questions, and I apologize for for having so many, but I think this is incredibly helpful for me to wrap. My head around all the complications of this. One is. On the the Southeastern Regional School Assessment, is that ninety two thousand dollar, seven point eight percent increase? Due to the expected students that are are increased? Or is it a fundamental increase in cost on the same level of students as were attending last year?
It's the latter, it's a reflection of the. Assumed net school spending level for the Southeastern Regional School, which would be bumped upward by the Student Opportunity Act. So the education reform bill, again, this is important because as. Members of our community look at us grapple with this budget, as our employees look at us grapple with this budget and say, well, what? What's the struggle, you have the CARES money or you have the Student Opportunity Act, Eastern. Schools and there's at least six people participating in this meeting who can probably speak to this far better than I can, but. Eastern schools were one of the handful of districts left behind by that reform where the increase in in chapter. Seventy education aid is not going to be going to the Eastern Public Schools. For a variety of of. Complex socioeconomic factors and built into a formula for how much a school district needs to run. That same legislation and that same formula has determined that the Southeastern Regional School needs a greater amount of dollars. To operate on a per pupil basis, and so member communities need to increase their contributions. And so Eastern has a seven point eight four percent increase. We have other towns around us, Mansfield, Foxborough, with closer to ten or twenty percent increases to basically make up that gap. That's assuming the Student Opportunity Act is implemented in fiscal twenty one, which I think. Remains an open question. But no, it is not driven in prior years, Tom, our our costs at of a regional have gone up due to enrollment, this year enrollment is slightly is level or slightly down, so the. Down.
Understood, thank you. This might be a question for Dr. Brawle, this the school side, just out of curiosity, if Eastern's economic status. In terms of some key statistics changes like wages, for example, and I'm referencing your. Data point that says regarding unemployment, Eastern is over twenty three percent, I believe that is higher than what I've heard in. Other circles regarding state and or. National figures, if Eastern turns out to be disproportionately affected by this crisis. Is there any opportunity for us to reset any of those calculations? From the state aid for the schools, any of those formulas that might be predicated upon wages in Eastern or in the community?
Chair DeLuca, would you like me to answer that?
Yes, please.
So I don't believe there will be, Tom, because first of all, the the metric that we use. Where we say we're just over five percent for the entitlement grants, that is actually directed by the census. They don't change that annually based on your actual rate because we have. At our estimate, a higher rate. Our free and reduced lunch rate is sixteen percent in the in the district. And so those are people who are qualifying for services under the state and federal calculations, so. Census is really the important thing there. And so the twenty twenty census is extremely important for our figures going forward, and they don't make those changes. Based on. A year to year actual and certainly not on a crisis like this. In terms of the foundation budget, the entire Student Opportunity Act is based on foundation formula. And we are not a foundation district, Connor referenced it earlier by saying we're minimum aid, you read a foundation district or a minimum aid district. We're a minimum aid district, so. Regardless of what happens, we receive thirty dollars per student. And that's it, so. If the Student Opportunity Act is funded or not funded, it doesn't have any impact on Eastern except that. If it is funded, it would represent potentially less money available for districts like Eastern. With other, in in other cut areas.
Understood. Thank you, Dr. Brawle, I appreciate that. Lastly, Connor, is there any opportunity for major projects, the item that comes to my mind might be the. Additional parcel for Avalon, is there any opportunity for us to leverage? Individual projects like that or one time development projects to supplement our operating budget? And while I may know the answer, I just think it might be beneficial for others in the community and certainly the community at large to understand the answer to that question.
Sure, so broadly speaking, the answer is no. You individualized projects occasionally do have mitigation, in the case you referenced Avalon's expansion, that does, but typically mitigation is for capital. One time expenses. You know, they make a one time payment related to reasonably anticipated cost impacts. And that can offset certain infrastructural needs relating to a project like sewer. Which is what Avalon will be doing. There are projects. At various stages of permitting in town. That if they continue to advance, they will generate obviously jobs through construction. And if those projects are built, they will generate new growth, which is one of the only areas on our balance sheet that continues to grow. Right, new growth is any new taxable property. And we've done very well in new growth the past three years and we we don't. Usually take all the credit for that, we can't, there's broader economic impacts on those things, so the towns invested tremendously in sewer and zoning reform and that's helped. Push the private sector in the right direction, but obviously the market was doing very well, and that's now changed, so. Our tact there is going to need to continue to be. What it has been, which is trying to make sure we work collaboratively. With development partners to keep projects advancing because although the temptation during crisis is to kind of pause and say, nope, 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 no one do anything, we need to understand that. We're already going to be getting hit really hard on things like meals tax, on things like excise tax, very likely on state. Revenue and to completely halt or take a. You know, stance that we shouldn't have no construction or none of that stuff moving forward, obviously we want people to be safe, but if they can do so, we want them to advance because we don't also want to purposefully. Crush our building permit revenue and our new growth, because those are going to be some of the only things that aren't in the red, if if any.
Excellent, thank you so much, that's all the questions that I have now, Dottie, I I pass it back to you.
Thanks, Tom, Chuck, are you there?
I am here.
Do you have any questions?
No, I just would like Connor to expand once more upon the. Final guiding principle which he had mentioned of the need to, the need. The apparent need for the use of stabilization funds and. How we must resist the urge to spend it all at one time. There there are, you had given a. Forecast of at least like another one, two, three years where the most serious parts of this crisis hopefully. Would be taking place, so can you comment once more on on that guiding principle, Connor?
Sure, so I'm going to pull up a couple of data points that are important here. You know, there is a lot of talk about. Rapid recovery. And that is desirable and no one wants anything but that, but it's really important to get past those kind of headlines and read into these economic reports. From nonpartisan institutions like the Congressional Budget Office, Moody's, Standards and Poor's, the IMF. Where even if the broader economy begins to pick up again in June and July, which is the hope. It is going to take a very long time, there's there's there's, you know, economic inertia, not every single job is going to come back. Immediately and certain institutions like I cited on this slide in the very beginning, like the Congressional Budget Office are forecasting that unemployment in the United States is going to be in the double digits. For the next twenty months and for sense of scale there, the single worst month of the Great Recession broke ten percent once. So we're talking about possibly twenty months and these are on baseline assumptions of recovery starting effectively next month. Even with that recovery beginning to come down from the astronomical level of unemployment we're currently at. We're going to have many, many, many months of significant economic hardship, unemployment. At levels that are sufficiently high as to create a drag on revenues for cities and towns and states. And so Chuck, I believe you were on the board of the last recession, so. As you know, and as was in my April twenty first report, we've learned not only from the Great Recession, as some may point out, well, you're. This is doom and gloom, the Great Recession was not as severe, but it was, it dragged out longer. Two thousand two was not as long as the Great Recession, so in both of those circumstances, the the past, the most notable recessions of this century so far. The. House and Senate Ways and Means Committees heard testimony that on average it took five years for the state. To have its tax revenue recover after both of those recessions, so those were both different recessions with different dynamics, different economic fundamentals at play, it took five years in both scenarios for state tax revenue to recover to pre recession levels. We know that from the Great Recession, it took Eastern eight years. For our state revenue to recover, so that's eight years of lost time where our second largest revenue category was below its actual non inflation adjusted level. And we know from that recession that we had to lean on our stabilization fund to great effect. For three or four successive years. We at that time, our stabilization fund only as of this fall is. Higher than it was in two thousand and eight in raw dollar figures. But as a percent of our total spending, it's still less. And so heading into two thousand eight, we had a lot of economic wind at our back, we had just had an operational override. We had just built up our reserves to the highest point they had been ever as a percent of our spending. State aid had increased by almost ten percent the year prior, none of us have seen that since then. We we see one to one and a half point growth in state aid, if not a cut in net available, so we had all those winds at our back heading into the last. Recession and even with that, we had to draw down. On our stabilization account, we spent seventy percent of that in less than three years and even with spending all of that reserve capacity. And dumping free cash on top of it, we still had to do layoffs, we still had to seek wage concessions and we've basically spent. The twelve years since then trying to rebuild our operational capacity and our reserves, so we know. Not only from our own experience, but from broader economic experience in the state. And looking at the shape of these recoveries and the lag time for public institutions, which are typically not headline generating, no one. You know, what, for example, job levels in the public sector in the United States in twenty twenty are largely the exact same. As two thousand and eight, that sector never recovered with jobs lost. We know those things now, we we should, we need to be smarter than last time because we have history to inform us and so you were here and I think that's why you're asking me to lay that out for anyone who wasn't, but. While the temptation is there, you see a two point five million dollar hole in the budget here and you see three million in the stabilization fund here and you say, well, okay. Solved. But it doesn't actually work that way, we need to be smart about it as difficult as it's going to be, because if we. Allocate that full reserve capacity right out of the gate. A number of things are going to happen, one is that we're just setting up a catastrophic fiscal cliff. For the next fiscal year, because that's one time money being used to pay for recurring costs like salaries, the other is that we will likely face a bond rating downgrade. Right, the ratings agencies already have a revised their outlook for public sector finance to negative across the United States, we don't need to blow up our entire reserve account. At the first sign of trouble to add to that. And finally, to Tom's point, if these projections, which are not worst case scenario, pan out. And we build a budget in the next five weeks that uses a significant amount of our stabilization fund and then we get cuts. In the fiscal year, we have, we have no recourse, at that point, it's not a blend. You know, right now, we're talking about this kind of mixture of all undesirable things, of reserve spending, of seeking concessions. Based on circumstances outside of all of our control on layoffs. If we spend all of our reserves down now and our projections turn out not to be worst case, there's no tools left whatsoever except significant layoffs in closing departments, so it's not responsible. So it's not responsible, as tempting as it can be, to just kind of move all those reserve dollars into the budget in the first year of trouble. We have, we have no reason to expect from any of the data that we're seeing, even if recovery begins in June and July, we have no compelling information to lead us to believe it would be safe and responsible with our community and with a budget of a size to spend all that money at once.
Thank you, Connor. That's all I have right now, Dottie.
Great, Mark, you're up.
I'm going to circle back to what some of the people on the Finance Committee were talking about. We have town meeting on June 22. And we have to balance the budget by June 22, which usually, I think it would be probably the week before. And I think for a number of reasons, it actually has to be done prior to that. And if we don't have, if we cannot create a safe forum for town meeting, and we have to delay it, then we're forced beyond July 1, and we're forced to adopt the 112 budget. And so then we'll be forced to cut even more than what you already have by about $430,000. Is that correct, Connor?
Yes.
Okay, so it is in our best interest to do everything we can to have a town meeting prior to July 1, so long as it's safe. That also, I would think, correct?
Yes, we would, we would like to be able to have a safe town meeting.
Okay. How close are we to creating that?
We are not, we, no one's, not many people have had a town meeting yet. We have a internal working team for Elections Administration that began meeting two weeks ago. Danielle Secard, so we are working on that. And because we don't only have town meeting in June, we have two elections in June. So we have a cross-departmental team with Public Works, with the schools, with public safety, public health in my office to work on planning for mechanisms to have meetings as safely as possible, including, you know, stuff that you would probably see at the grocery store, mandatory masks, spreading people out, reduction of hard surface things that you hand out and things like that. So we are working on it, we're in touch with the moderator on that.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, I'm just going to do one more pass to FinCom and School Committee. And then while we do that, if anyone is an attendee and has a question, if you would put that into the Q and A, and we'll get, we'll get those questions answered as well. Anyone else from FinCom have a question?
Dottie, I do, if, if, but go ahead, Tim.
Sorry, mine should be a quick one. With the understanding that emergency funding usually takes a long time to get to us in the terms of two to three years. And that we can't use the CARE Act to supplement our expenses for COVID and the responses that is required from the municipality. Is there any word on the state level as to any of that reimbursement coming over the next two to three years in the form of an emergency fund, such as like the kind we get from a bad storm or those kinds of things? Is the state looking to supplement not our state revenue necessarily, but emergency funding to cover the expenses of what we spent during the past three months?
So I'll try to answer that. And if I get the wrong revenue streams, just interrupt me and tell me. You're, you're talking, you're touching on FEMA reimbursements, right?
Correct.
And CARES funding. So CARES funding is being administered by the state. And the initial request for CARES funding is actually due on June 5. That guidance came out on Friday. So we will be working on that quickly to seek a disbursement of that. And from what the sound of it is from the Treasury, if the United States Treasury and the State's Administration of Finance, that funding actually appears that that should be coming relatively quickly compared to most federal money. So that's positive news. There are significant restrictions on that money, as you touched on. And we are still working through the exact particulars of the guidance given on Friday. But it looks like you can only request 25% of eligible costs because the assumption is that 75% of those costs would be covered by FEMA. So we're working with Chief Partridge, I'm a FEMA piece. I have not heard of any kind of fast-track plan for FEMA reimbursement. To your point, it does usually take years for us to recoup those dollars. The, the, I guess, silver lining I have there is that part of one of the municipal relief packages was that we are able to deficit spend for COVID-19-related costs and supplies, things like that. And so in theory, or not in theory, we have established a COVID-19 departmental account for all of our different departments across town or school. If there's a supply need or something particular directly related to COVID that is reasonably anticipated to be FEMA reimbursable or CARES reimbursable, that's getting accounted for directly and in that way, so that we can quickly go for the CARES funding portion of it. And the Commonwealth allows you to amortize the remainder over three years, should you need to, while you wait for FEMA money. So that, that does provide us some relief. I hope that answers the question.
It does, thank you. And I also just wanted to take a minute, I know it's been said at every meeting, and I just wanted to reiterate it. I'd be remiss if I didn't, but I've been fortunate enough to work on the front line and in the background of a lot of what's been happening over the past few months in our community. And I just wanted to give a, a huge thank you to, to everybody who's been working in the background, making sure the bills are getting paid and the, and the stuff's getting done. But also to our frontline responders out there who have been living this day in and day out and doing just a fantastic job getting, getting everything that we need for our community to keep us functioning. And of course, I also want to give a big shout out to many of our townspeople and our businesses and everybody that's been throwing us a a lot of support over the past few months. It hasn't gone unnoticed. And while, you know, a lot of us have been really busy and haven't had a chance to give that shout out publicly, I just wanted to make sure that we do that. And a big thank you to everybody here tonight, too. It, it means a lot that you guys are here doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tim, and to everyone in the department. You've all been incredible.
Roberta, did I hear you also in the background for a question, comment?
Yeah, yeah, and Tim just really jumped on what my question was going to be. And Connor, you're right. I mean, we've seen in private industry that the federal funding for, for things related to the CARES Act and the reimbursements and the applications is happening fairly quickly. So that's definitely a positive sign. I do wonder whether or not that will give us an opportunity at all to see some additional, I don't know, will there be any free cash at the end of this fiscal year? You know, and it's a stretch, I know it is, but is there any possibility? I mean, this is, we're looking at a potential, I think we saw $2.2 million. So I, I'm just curious about that.
Sure, that's, the current spend level on the COVID deficit is, I think, Wendy, around $150,000 or $120,000?
It's actually about 100, and we just ran another accounts payable run. So it's, it's at 160,000 right now.
So that's 160,000 of costs we've incurred, whether it's overtime directly relating to COVID or supply purchases that we should be able to expect to get through CARES funding, which is good. One of the challenges that we have and frustrations, if I'm being honest, is I would sure like that 2.2 million to just not have red tape restrictions on it and use it to continue to employ people to be on the frontline dealing with this. But for now, that is not the case. So we, we are doing everything we can within the confines of the law to account for things that can be attributed to CARES funding and using that money as intelligently as we can to create the kind of turnbacks and breathing room you're talking about, Roberta, to try and minimize fiscal 20 spend levels, so that we can have some departmental turnbacks. Whether or not that will turn into any kind of free cash certification worth much to help us is, remains to be seen. But, you know, even if it's 180, 200, 300,000, it's 300,000 that is being spent out of federal funds rather than appropriated to local dollars. And that's going to help because as Wendy said, what we're really kind of holding our breath right now for is just hoping that our projected collections for fiscal 20 actually materialize at all. So we may, even if we do have turnbacks in our departmental spending due to being able to offload some of that on CARES, we are going to be fighting, the same fight in the opposite direction, expecting revenue to come in less than what we had hoped. So it remains to be seen. But Wendy and I are not confident that we're going to have a significant free cash certification at the end of this year, unfortunately, which will add to Chuck's question about reserve use. Cash we don't have at the end of this year is money we don't have for fiscal 22.
I, I'd like to say again, you know, not to echo so much what, what Tim said, but to echo the work of, of your group, Connor, and the Select Board and the FinCom over these past several years as we did build that reserve fund up and stabilization fund up. Because you've predicted this for a long time, Connor. So, you know, thank you. And, and, you know, I think it could be a lot worse, and we could be in a lot worse position. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Jen Starr has her hand up, so Jen, do you have?
Yes, I do. Connor, can you, can you just go back to talking about deficit spending for COVID-19 supplies? And I think there's a, there's a bit of complexity with being able to use that or some restrictions around being able to use that to say replenish the supplies that we've talked a lot in the School Committee about how the School Department had donated a lot of supplies that we'll need to replenish before we're able to open doors to school health supplies and things like that. So our understanding from a couple of weeks ago at least, was that those funds would not be able to help offset our, the School Department's costs of repurchasing the supplies that were donated. Can you speak to that at all? Or maybe Leisha, if, if?
Yeah, not in, in particulars relating to any one item done by the schools. But in general, if it's a material or supply purchase, you're talking about PPE or something like that, that can be, you know, with a straight face attributed to the health crisis, I would think it would be eligible. But that, that, that's coming from me. I, I can't speak with any authority on that for, for school materials.
It, it is actually PPE material. And at first, we were not going to be able to be reimbursed for things that were donated. And that has since, I, I think that we've gotten more information that that is developing where we can do that. But at first, things that were donated and not bought purposely for us to use for our custodians, people that were working, our students when they come, et cetera. But that is developing, and I believe that now we are able to do, use that.
Okay.
We have forwarded that, we have forwarded that information. It's part of what Connor's talking about with the, I think it's 160,000 now total. But that is, that is a point that is important. In another way also, is that a lot of people see that as sort of additional money. And so, you know, perhaps we can free money up in the operational budget. For example, is a question that I, I was asked, you know, we can't use that money for anything except COVID-related expenses. And, and I was asked, yes, but then you can move operational costs. You can use those for different things, but that's, that's actually not true. Because these are for literally, these are for unexpected things that happened because of COVID. It's to get us that level service again. So it's to fill in for all the donations we made and then to purchase materials and equipment to help us. Normally, we wouldn't go into a school year buying thousands and thousands of masks for students and teachers. And so none of this frees up anything. You know, we didn't have any operational budget line items for COVID-19 equipment or sanitation devices or things like that. So it really doesn't free anything up for us or give us the opportunity to use spending elsewhere. It is literally to help fill in money that we unexpectedly had to use for equipment.
Great, thank you both.
Okay, this will be the last pass. If there are any attendees from the public or department heads or anyone that has another, any questions, last chance to get those in the Q and A. If you put your cursor on the bottom of your screen, you should see a little menu pop up if you're not sure where the Q and A is. And anyone else on Select Board, FinCom, or Finance, or School Committee? If nothing further, I think what we'll do is we're just going to take a three-minute pause while we transition people out of this group and back into attendees, or people can drop off the call. And then we're going to resume the meeting. So we can, we can do that, Michael, if you're ready.
Dottie, I would just ask that each board, School, Finance Committee first, and then the School Committee take a motion, a second and a vote to adjourn their meeting, just for our record.
Right.
I'll go first. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second, second, second.
All those in favor, we have to do a voice vote with name, correct?
Before you just say who made the motion by name and who seconded it for the minutes, please?
Mike motioned. Davis seconded, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Patrick Allen, yes.
Mike De Pedro, yes.
Jamie Stevens, yes.
Oh, sorry, Jamie. Roberta Verbil, yes.
Jen Stacy, yes.
Jeremy Tumilio, yes.
Davis Healy, yes.
Vamlose, yes.
Okay, and could we do the same with the School Committee?
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Caroline O'Neill makes the motion to adjourn.
Jen Starr seconds the motion.
And then I need a vote. Caroline?
Caroline O'Neill, yes.
Michelle Durant, yes.
Nancy DeLuca, yes. Jackie? Jen?
Jen Starr, yes.
Jackie Wiseman, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I know we have a couple of people on, on the attendees that are waiting for our conversation about Main Street. So I appreciate your patience and just hang on. And we're going to make some of the transitions happen right now. Thank you. Okay, I just unmuted everyone. And I think that we can resume. Really, we have a quick item next, which is a nomination for the Town's Representative of Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors. We got a letter submitted by the Chief Executive Officer of OCES asking us to nominate someone to be on, let me see the exact wording of this, to be our representative for Old Colony Elder Services. And we have a nomination of Ann Daly. So if anybody would like to make a motion to nominate Ann Daly.
So moves, Craig Barger.
Second, Tom Broussard.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Barger Daly.
Broussard Daly.
King Daly.
Lam Daly.
And Full Janetti Daly. I just want to mention that Kathleen Gouvea was the current Board Director from Easton. Kathleen has moved on from the town. She did an amazing job for us. She'll really be missed. And I just want to wish her well in everything that she does. If you've had the opportunity to meet her, I'm sure you'll agree she was. Give it up. Next is the discussion and a possible vote about Northeastern Village Infrastructure. Connor, do you want to lead us into this a little bit?
Sure, just so a quick recap. At your last meeting, DPW gave a pretty detailed project update on this project, which has been in design for quite some time. To talk about what it would look like if the town were to proceed would be full-scale, roughly estimated at three-plus-million-dollar undergrounding project on Main Street. And at that time, one of the concerns- And at that time, one of the concerns that was brought up was the construction impact, the duration of that construction impact, obviously the sensitive nature of construction impact for businesses who are already really taking a hit from COVID. And the board gave kind of a list of of questions and deliverables to Dave and I to go and do some work on and come back. And so that is what we are here to talk about tonight. I believe, Dottie, you and Mark, as Economic Development Council reps, spoke with some of the businesses directly to get their feedback from a project. I think many of them are on this meeting. So this is just a continuation of that discussion as well as some specific feedback on phase three power and other items from Public Works. So I'll turn it over to either Dave or Greg or Tom from Beta, whichever makes the most sense, Dave.
Sure, I'll start off. With me is Greg Swong and from my office and Tom Loughlin from Beta. We did check with National Grid. The question was is three-phase power available to the properties on Main Street? Regardless of this project happening, and the answer is yes. So regardless of whether this project happens or not, three-phase power is possible. So that was the first thing we wanted to check on. And I guess we can go back to the board if they have any questions about any of the processes.
Greg, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Tom?
Uh, no, not at this time.
I do not at this time, no.
And Mark?
No, just well, to clarify, so nothing has changed since the last meeting. Aside from we've now learned that power is a non-issue and it's really a fully aesthetic project.
Yes, yeah, that's true.
That's, there are other aspects of it as well. Dave, you want to have Beta talk about that?
Sure, through our discussions, Tom Loughlin did come up with a another idea of maybe a smaller project. Wouldn't do the main undergrounding of Main Street, but it was possible we could do an offshoot of that. I'll turn it over to Tom to discuss that. Tom?
Yes, so good evening. So in listening to last week's discussion and prior discussions that we've had in the community, I kind of thought that it might be possible. You know, once we knew that we could get three-phase power either from a pole or from a ground mounted transformer next to a pole. I was thinking about some of the other kind of wishlist things that were brought about in prior discussions and one of them being that to try to extend some of the streetscaping elements that were put into the downtown project prior down to just approximately the church. So down in front of the parcel, the one of the parcels that it's desired to increase the power from single phase to three phase. Within that, we would have the ability to drop one utility pole and underground a pole between Williams Street and the church, which would be directly in front of the parcel that's proposed to be developed. And then within that same limit from Williams down to the church, widen the sidewalks on both sides of the street and add some of the decorative lighting that's in the downtown area as well to kind of extend the limits of downtown. You know, with a new building going there, it might be nice to try to attract people and spread out the district a little bit more and stuff like that. Some of the other things, the three-phase power, I think Dave had mentioned last week can be done either from the pole directly next to or nearest to the property, or it can also be done underground and we could bring three-phase power into the Main Street block on the restaurant side through the rear of the properties rather than from the Main Street location. So coming off of Mechanic Street, we could go underground or overhead, increase the power source from single phase to three phase and come into the rear of what I think is 104 and 106 Main Street. It's the it's the lot that's currently the building's been torn down and there's kind of a Jersey barrier in front of it. So that that parcel could be upgraded from the rear. The restaurant and the building next to it have already been upgraded from the rear as far as three-phase power goes. So this wouldn't it wouldn't get you everything that the other project got, but it would certainly enhance and expand upon what you've already done as far as undergrounding a lot of the service connections.
And Tom, just to be clear, so the original grant project contemplated, there is already a significant amount of undergrounding in the downtown, undergrounding and beautification and streetscape work that was done in 2000, I think 11, 12, 13 and 14 that this project in its initial design would basically finish undergrounding the remaining utilities that are above ground, but it's a tight road. There's already utilities in the ground. You need to move a water main. You need to work around all the other utilities that are already there. So it would be a it would, your estimate's three million plus and it would be disruptive just due to how tight that road is. And so the alternative that you're talking about to try to accomplish a lot of the same things would would be smaller in scale, less costly, I think. Is that?
Yes, it would definitely be less costly and it would all it would take less time and it would be less disruptive to the businesses.
And for traffic, it would it would preserve significantly more of the traffic flow to the businesses on the on the block of Main Street in question between Mechanic and Sullivan. Yes?
Absolutely. The we would not have a need to detour. The length that we would deal with between Williams Street and the church is rather short, could be broken up into two or three trenches and you could do alternating traffic through the work zone. Probably another point that is very similar to the way that you did the original downtown portion was when you did that, there were very few businesses that were as active as they are now. And from the block on Williams Street, the southern side of the street from Williams to the church, you basically have that same condition again where those properties are currently underutilized in a lot of ways. And the impact to them, we would need to get people into that one location where there's still seems to be some residents living in the home, but that would be pretty minor in in, you know, the construction zone that we could accommodate.
So it's it's a scaled down project that would be shorter, less costly. You can still achieve phase three power to 114 Main Street, which is yet to be developed absent the rebuilding of that block of Main Street. And it would extend the current aesthetic of downtown, basically from its current limit at Mechanic to the Immaculate Conception Church, improve the sidewalks, historic lighting. And would it would it improve parking at all or?
It would add four spaces on the north side of Main Street. Parking may, it might fit better on the south side, but it would roadway geometry would have to change so dramatically that it really wouldn't fit. So the parking would have to be on the northern side. But I'm sure that the development would include parking onsite or underground when they went ahead and did something there anyway.
Right, and this would free up one of the main inhibitors right now in theory. So phase three is really a non factor to Mark Lamb's point. But we do currently have poles and transformers, probably like arms length from a pre-existing building that is as part of our our private partner's portfolio that is wished to be redeveloped. And so the scaled back project would actually remove that and improve that area more. Is that accurate?
The area, I'm unclear which area you're talking about. Between Williams and Main, yes. Yeah, so I I included taking down as a pole. I guess looking at the home that's right on the corner of Williams and Main, right to the left of that, there is a utility pole there.
Like practically in the window.
Yeah, so taking that utility pole down would remove any of the visual for what would occur for the new building. You wouldn't have a line of utility, either the pole or the lines themselves in front of of the new building, which I would assume if you're trying to increase density would be closer or as close to the property line as as the current buildings are and stuff like that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Connor, it's Craig Barger. What what's the the issue for me is whether or not that's allowable under our original grant proposal, which was funded?
Yeah, so I had a discussion with Mass Works. And in general, their comments back were that as long as the project is meeting the general goals of the contract that you were issued, which is a very minor statement. It talks about the economic development of downtown Easton. So it doesn't get into requiring you to have to underground or anything like that. It talks about utility or power improvements for the economic development. And I believe that this would fit into that category, but you know, maybe before you proceeded, we could follow that up with a a letter requesting the change and and see where they go. I I'm certain that Mass Works wants to move along in a sense and would probably be open to a lot of alternatives to, you know, to accommodate that and have a win for everybody here to get this project going and to, you know, to and for less money, I'm sure I'm sure they have expenses. I know you just went through some a lot of discussions about your own expenses, but I'm sure they are seeing increases in different projects as well because of the situations we're in, so.
Thank you.
So what what would be the period of disruption if we did it in the abbreviated version versus first, the the full version looked like it was going to be a close to a 10-month project of of street disruption over two seasons. What would that look like if it was reduced to the Plan B, let's say?
I I would think you could probably do it in four months, four to five months, depending, you know, what you might have for a winter break, how quickly we could get started this season. You know, put in trenches and and patch them and then come back in the spring and just grind and overlay the roadway. So it would be much less disruption in time.
Okay. So that was my concern is that we have, you know, restaurants and businesses that are taking it really hard right now being closed or having their service reduced. And to ask them to have more disruption in their service is really very concerning. So Mark and I agreed, we're both on the Economic Development Committee. We we split up their 10 businesses down there that that would be very impacted. Mark took five, I took five. I reached out, I sent email and voicemail to my five and heard back from two. I heard from Auntie Zaza's yarn shop and Bill's House of Pizza. They're both on the call right now and I'd like to first switch Elizabeth to allow her to talk to see if she has any comments on this, if it's okay with everyone. So.
Hi there. Hi, I'm Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Not sure if I'm up and going, so thank you for inviting me to this.
Can we get your full name and address, please, just for the minutes?
Yeah, it's Elizabeth Alec. I'm owner of Auntie Zaza's Fiber Works at 104 Main Street in Easton.
Thank you.
Yep, so Dottie, thank you for inviting me and certainly my observation, having been in business for seven years, is it sure seems like Main Street got dug up quite a few times already. So there's a part of me I would say that's like, well, here we go again. Not sure how this is going to be for business, but we've weathered it before. Certainly, I'd have an interest in a shorter timeframe over what was the original communication that looked like it might extend over two years or something, that it seemed that it was 2022, I thought, when things would be on the rap. I don't know whether that's accurate or not, but definitely I would experience an impact and I'm trying to keep keep myself educated about the process.
I appreciate your feedback on that and I'd really like to continue conversations with you offline of this to to find out what are the best ways to keep in touch with businesses? We didn't have super great luck getting feedback from everyone, but I really appreciate you taking the time to speak with me and also to join this call as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to mention that I, you know, I marvel at some of the creative things that our businesses have been doing and I follow your work and see that you're doing a lot of online. You know, how can a yarn store, you know, get through this period of time and you've really taken the opportunity to offer online instruction and really keep your community of customers involved. So congratulations to you on that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I didn't know the word Zoom about a month and a half ago, like most of us and it's pretty wild to imagine being, am I supposed to have my video on? Is that nicer if people can see me? So how to actually instruct people in knitting, you know, by holding up my knitting needles in front of the camera. It's been kind of an amazing little adventure for all of us, but I probably have about 40 students that were able to follow me onto the online platform and experiencing tremendous support from my community and my efforts to be creative during this downtime.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that. Does any of the board members have any questions for Elizabeth? Okay, great.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
And we'll stay in touch. Bill is on from Bill's House of Pizza. I assume that's him. I don't see a last name. If we can invite Bill. Bill, are you there? Hello? Bill, are you there? Maybe it wasn't the, maybe it was a different Bill that just didn't have a last name. Well, when I spoke with Bill from Bill's House of Pizza, he was concerned. Of course, I reached him last. He was trying to prepare for his lunch crowd. And he was, you know, he was a little bit concerned. I sent him the information and he said he was going to join. I feel like he may have had some of the same concerns as Elizabeth there across the street from each other and how the disruption would impact his business as well. So the other three that I contacted did not return calls or emails to me. We can continue to reach out, but I wasn't successful in reaching them. Mark, if you want to give an update on the people that you reached out to?
Sure, I reached out to five people, four of which I spoke to and two of which were restaurant owners on Main Street that was not Bill's. So you can pretty much figure out who those restaurants were and I shared with them the project. They had an idea of what was going on and I was surprised to learn that they were actually in support of it. To be fair, I didn't share with them what I what we just heard from Mr. Loughlin, that there is an alternative option to this. At the time when we spoke, it was either the project or not the project. There was no alternative. They knew it would enhance downtown, the beautification of downtown, the aesthetics of downtown. They understood that there are some growing pains to go through in order to achieve that. And they knew it would be a risk to their business. And they were willing to accept it for the year of construction, so long as one of the things they asked was that the town seriously support them during the construction in helping them secure additional parking because street parking would be removed. So they would need a temporary solution for additional street for additional parking and signage. They spoke very clearly about the need for signage through the detoured areas that would allow people to get to their restaurants and support their business. And so, yeah, they were they were supportive, which I, to be honest, I was surprised to hear. One of the things that was also discussed was a potential, we use this as a potential opportunity. Right now, people are talking about outdoor seating a lot and I know this project would be a year away. But they've always talked about outdoor seating or more outdoor seating at downtown restaurants, some of these restaurants out front on the sidewalk. And the idea was the idea was brought up to reduce parking on the street, on the storefront side by the restaurants and see if as part of this, I don't want to call it a revital, or the continuation of the revitalization of downtown, I'll call it that. Call it that, um, could incorporate less parking on the streets to accommodate. Outdoor dining and uh, that was something that was thrown out there. Uh, and interestingly, as I just heard Mr. Loughlin's um, alternative option. He, he mentioned that there are four spots, four additional spots would be on the north side of town, which would tell me that I, or I would think. That uh, if we were to go with his option, you could take two additional spots in front of the Farmer's Daughter per se. Um, you know, where it juts out on either side and there are those spots and. The cost to redo all that would be, I would think, carried in the cost of the project because this project is considerably less. So, in that scenario, I look at it and say, and this again hasn't been proposed to uh, people I spoke to, cause I just learned it. But that seems like a very, like a win-win situation or a win-win-win situation, cause in front of William Street in Maine, it's undergrounded. Extension of uh, of, of this area goes up to uh, a magical conception. There's more parking added and we could. Add, or entertain the idea of outdoor seating uh, in front of some of these restaurants. But I also wanna point out that Mr. Loughlin's other alternative. I do like it, but it is not the undergrounding of Main Street, so we, we did move. If we go with that route, we're moving completely away from the initial. Uh, purpose of, of this whole project.
Well, the.
A lot, I know, and I, I could have probably, I probably confused or uh, complicated the decision a little bit more, but uh, that's.
You know, Mark, I think, Dottie, could I jump in on that?
Sure.
So I think that's a good point. What you're basically saying is that it seems like an alternative, perhaps scaled down or re. Rethought project could create new parking opportunities elsewhere, which could coincidentally perhaps help achieve some other objectives. That you were talking about with folks uh, under the, which under the, the original vision of this project would be very difficult to achieve.
Right.
Um, I do think to Tom's point, um, you know, Tom had spoke with Mass Works and although. Um, you're right, this would certainly be a project change, which we would want to try to the extent we could align with Mass Works and our private partner. It is consistent with, that grant application was quite broad and general for the, I mean, the name doesn't really roll off the tongue. It's the Northeastern Infrastructure Project Phase One A uh, Revitalization, right? So if you are undergrounding, this would still be undergrounding some utilities, just a slightly different portion of it. Um, and extending the streetscape, so it, it would be, it certainly would be a change of direction. But I think it, it's pretty consistent with the overall theme um, of driving development and uh, improvement of the downtown.
Uh, and I do believe right now, uh, one of the owners of the restaurants is, is in the attendees section. Uh, I don't know if they have the opportunity to raise their hand as an attendee, so if she's listening and she wants to say something, please raise your hand and contribute. Uh, if you'd like.
No pressure, now that you've been.
No, I, I, I just wanted to, you know, ma- make a point that I, I know that she's uh, in attendance in this.
We uh, we moved over to a presenter and unmuted, so if you wanna speak.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi there. Hi there, Condor Goldrup of the Farmer's Daughter at one twenty-two Main Street. How are you?
Great. Welcome us tonight, Condor.
Yes, thanks for inviting me. I appreciate the opportunity. I apologize in advance, my five-year-old's running around in the house. We'll see how this goes. Um, I'll try to keep it brief and Mark, thank you for reaching out. I genuinely appreciate the opportunity to even just. Even have a word on this, so um, just real quickly, I, I have been in favor of this project um, in previous planning. Um, I think it kinda fell off of, I know it fell off my radar in terms of the timing of this currently right now. Um, I'm trying, in terms of supporting this project, I have in the beginning stages, obviously nobody was planning for a pandemic. And I certainly didn't think my business would be under state mandate to be closed, so. Um, it's a little overwhelming, I think, quite honestly, to even think about where things are going to be. Um, and I'm kind of in the stuck-in mode of just kind of focusing on how I'm gonna get my doors reopened at the moment, so. Um, to think kind of past that is challenging right now, but I'm certainly concerned about traffic flow, I mean. Again, I didn't, I, there's no business planning for having your business closed for multiple months in a row and then possibly have a street closure on top of that, so. You know, I would say it's a little daunting, but I'm trying to stay positive aesthetically and from a power point of view. I mean, we lose power quite a bit. Um, and I have to close my business due to that, so I'm hoping some of this underground grounding may or may not contribute. To less of that in the near future, so that's certainly a positive of the project, but um. You know, I would love to continue the conversation of, depending on where, where things go in terms of how we can maybe work with the town to. Try to keep her, keep our business going in any, in any way.
Sure, well, we're, we're, as the select board, we're gonna have to decide whether we're. Go for the, the full uh, build out on this or whether we can do the Plan B, which is the scaled back version. Um, we, the, the whole point of this really was to make sure there was enough power down there. It looks like that might be resolved with this Plan B. Um, and, and also um, the, the pole and the wires that are in front of the old Joyce Law Building. That's to be developed, um, that, that was a problem uh, as well. I was there when we did the original walkthrough with the utility companies and, you know, it, we were looking at in the area. You know, what could we do that, i- if you're out there and you're doing the work, what would be the best way to accomplish all of it? Um, but really the priority was in front of that building, that particular building and the power. Um, and, and that would also drive the opportunity to get the new building built next to yours. With the power, so I guess we have to decide um, which is the, gonna be. Still achieve those goals, but with the minimal impact on the businesses. Um, we've gotten a lot of feedback from people in the community that miss going out to dinner down there. Miss you and your staff and the other restaurants and their, and, and their staff. Um, you know, to the point where people are asking, what can we do to help with more outdoor dining and things like that, so. Um, you know, we're taking this very seriously and we, we do, we wanna make sure that you're successful um, and. You know, so your input is really important to us.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, so thank you.
So if, if we were able to do the, the Plan B, you would be supportive with that?
I mean, that certainly sounds like it's a, and it's nicer alternative given our current climate, for sure.
Great. Mark, did you have anything else?
No, with this new um, with this new alternative, I think it's a great alternative and I think. Everybody wins in this scenario and I think we're more protected financially from uh, cost overruns. And I think it also gives an opportunity to uh, seriously look at uh, expanded outdoor seating for those restaurants. I, I see this, the answer seems very obvious to me.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Condor.
Thank you.
Tonight. Is there anyone else on the um, attendee list that I'm not recognizing that wants to make a comment on this? Um, if you could just use the raise your hand function. Okay, I don't see anybody. Um, Mark, were, the other um, businesses that you were able to speak with, did they have any comments?
Um, the offices that I spoke with uh, were in favor of it. Uh, again, they, they were unaware of this alternative uh, this alternative plan, but they were also in favor of it. One of them um, expressed concern over uh, the detour and getting some clients into their business. But they were, they understood that uh, that would, that they, they, they were able to overcome that. So overall, I, it was positive. It was all positive. But again, I can't stress enough, they didn't know this alternative was, was on the table.
Right. Um, any, any other board members have any other comments or questions at this time? Do you want, do we wanna think about this or do we wanna give direction on, on which? You know, I'm still convinced that the shorter version accomplishes all the goals that we had and minimizes the disruption. Um, I, I think that um, the, the owners that we heard from tonight feel that same way. Are you willing to jump on that bandwagon, Mark, or do you wanna, do you wanna?
I am, I am. I think it, in light of everything that's going on in this world. Um, I don't wanna see anybody's businesses take a further hit and this is a way for us to have our cake and eat it too.
Right, I agree. Um, Craig, do you have any last minute comments on this?
Uh, no, I'm glad that we asked the question last meeting about whether there were alternatives about bringing power in. Um, and I think that it, that's been answered and I agree completely with Mark that if, if we can do this without the disruption that we had. Thought was gonna happen and we can bring the power in and the businesses in, in downtown are able to continue to function and. Do not lose business because of more construction, I'm all for it.
Terrific. Tom?
Uh, I think uh, I'm for it as well. I do think that we need to continue to take steps to make sure we support any disruption that we. Uh, do actually create with this project, but I'm glad that it's less. I think it's good that we still get benefit. Um, and I think that uh, even if there are aesthetic reasons, that still continues to add value to those property holders. And I think to Mark's point, uh, we might be able to package it with a way to increase business opportunity for the business owners down there. And I think that's very important, especially given our conversation we just had regarding the importance of new growth.
And Chuck?
Uh, thanks to Dottie and Mark for serving on the council and for canvassing these groups and uh. Also, thanks to Mark for bringing up the, uh, for insisting on uh, the canvassing itself. I thought it was a great idea and I, I uh, I feel much better about the whole issue.
Okay. Condor, do we need to make a formal vote or can, is this just a consensus of a direction for you to go in or?
Uh, well, I just wanna get a little bit more detail from Dave and Tom. Um, Dave, Tom, what, what kind of uh, timeline do you need to do a, a formal uh, shift here and, and keep, get us moving? If we're gonna do a, uh, alternative version?
Uh, sure, I'll, um, so the first thing I think we alluded to, we'd have to get that in writing with Mass Works, that this would be. An eligible project change, um, and then we could get moving on uh, designing. Now, we've gotten pricing and designed this project with the various utility companies. We have to go back to them, have them reprice it. So there will be some time involved in that, cause that did take quite a bit of time, but hopefully that we can work with our contacts we have now. Um, and get that done in shorter order than it, the main project happened. But I, you know, I'm anticipating if this all works out and we're all in agreement on what the limits of the project are and. If we're gonna be making curb line changes for parking, that we can figure that out, that we could be into construction. Um, sometime late summer, early fall.
Okay, so if that's the case, I would ask the board to uh, take a vote if you're comfortable um. Uh, directing and Lisa, this will be the motion of the board will have it. Uh, directing me to uh, coordinate with Mass Works on a possible project change. Uh, in accordance with the alternative project scope that we just discussed.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
So moved, Craig Barger.
Second, Chuck King.
All in favor, roll call vote from starting with um, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Retard, yes.
King, yes.
Liam, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. So, great. Thank you very much for everyone's input on that and uh, thank you to the business owners for joining the call. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And also, I didn't, uh, the last meeting, I didn't get a chance to thank Tom for uh, hit Tom Loughlin for his work on this. Um, so I wanna make sure that I recognize uh, his work and, and David and Greg Swan on this. We really appreciate it.
You're more than welcome. Been a pleasure to work with you guys.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next, um, we have the standing update on the COVID nineteen response in Easton.
Sure. Um. So as is our general practice now, I just uh, to keep the board and the public aware of what we are working on. Um, we have this as a standing item on all the agendas, just to touch on what we are doing uh, here regarding our response to COVID. So uh, the Eastern Emergency Management Association uh, continues to meet uh, all the time uh, to continue. Uh, assessing our emergency operations locally, what's going on regionally, uh, and of course to get information from state and national level. Uh, today was obviously a big day in Massachusetts. Um, the governor's reopening advisory board delivered their phased reopening plan for the Commonwealth. Uh, which seems like it's a pretty good report, lots of good data in there. Um, not a tremendous amount of movement in this first phase that we're in today. I'll touch on that a little bit. Uh, later on, uh, so we, early, early on in this crisis, we had a, a working group set up back in February, actually. Before the state of the emergency uh, with Chief Partridge and Health Director Kennedy. Where they were keeping their eye on this as it was advancing and before it was really a, a huge item of national conversation in the United States. And that morphed into what is now, uh, I can't count uh, rapidly, but I think about a dozen working teams that we established early on. Because it was clear that the scope and impact of this crisis was far outside of our normal. Um, kind of inter-office uh, operations and so we stood up a variety of teams. From different departments and different sectors in the regional and local economy to help us plan uh, for this. And some of the newer teams we stood up are, are reopening public service planning, uh, so public safety has obviously continued to operate twenty-four seven throughout this crisis. And have served uh, incredibly admir- admirably throughout it. Uh, Public Works, it uh, had split shifts, they're back at full force. It is a busy season for Public Works, so they are working. Uh, with enhanced safety protocols. And our administrative offices uh, are working uh, mostly remotely. Some folks are coming into buildings uh, for certain functions. Um, but they remain close to the public, uh, while we try to provide as much service as we can remotely. Uh, which remains consistent with the plan rolled out today. Um, so we have a reopening public services team. We have an elections planning team, uh, that Danielle Secard stood up. Uh, we met uh, for the first time last week to spend a couple hours in great detail going through planning for the June second. Special election, which will take place at Town Hall. Uh, more information will be coming uh, soon on that publicly. That group will also be uh, uh, reviewing and digesting best practices from other elections offices around the state. As we plan for the June twenty-second. Um, annual town election, uh, Danielle uh, has done some PSA videos with E-CAP, they're on social media. We've done a lot of web-based uh, campaigning to push uh, for folks to understand that they can vote by mail. Um, there's a process for that. We're encouraging people to do that. It is safe and effective and they can participate in their government without having to go to the polls. If they are concerned about the health uh, impacts there. Uh, that group will also be working with Kate Wild shortly on planning uh, for a town meeting on June twenty-second. And uh, today I asked the Planning Director, uh, Emi Ayu to stand up a new uh, team. That uh, we will be contacting folks uh, this week. Uh, uh, folks on uh, Eastern reopening, uh, which will be looking at the kind of. Uh, intersectionality of what we do here and impacts on the private sector. So we just had a pretty good conversation with folks in the business community about uh, infrastructure downtown. We wanna keep that conversation going. We've had a lot of folks, particularly from the restaurant sectors, reaching out to us in anticipation of the governor's report today. Um, restaurants are not part of Phase One, but they are listed in Phase Two and there is apparently a state-level committee that's getting more input on that. Uh, the governor did it in Kate, the phases are at least three weeks apart, so we have a little bit of time before there's a significant activity on in-person. Uh, uh, dining, but that's something that's coming and so we wanna make sure that we have folks represented from our different boards and committees that are. Responsible for permitting and regulating business, to make sure that we're working with people hand in hand in our business community. Uh, obviously to think of it differently and more creatively about how we can help support people who are trying to change their business model. Uh, as much if not more than what we had to do with ours. So that group will be being set up this week. Hopefully be uh, contacting regional uh, bodies like the Old Colony Planning Council, Chambers of Commerce. Business owners in town and, and working together with people in that regard. Uh, so each of these, we kinda start on big picture and get down to the little picture. Uh, the United States is still the uh, epicenter of this pandemic, unfortunately. We're just under one point five million cases. I think we've passed ninety thousand deaths uh, tragically uh, today. Uh, Massachusetts uh, has been seeing some positive trending. Still having over a thousand cases confirmed a day with some level of regularity, but our hospital capability, uh, hospitalization rates have been. Uh, declining, uh, which is positive according to the governor. As of to yesterday, there were eighty-six thousand cases and the Commonwealth were nearing six thousand deaths. Again, I hate kind of reading it off in such a statistical way, but here we are. The rate of infection per 100,000 in the Commonwealth is about 1,200. So just for a sense of scale, at your last meeting, we were about 20,000 cases less than where we are today. In Easton, we have not had a tremendous amount of case growth in the past two weeks, which is good. But with the obvious caveat that we have on our COVID website that testing is still not universal. And so it's folly to read too much into any of these trends. We present it because it's the best information we do have and it's important to make available publicly. But we're not trying to deduce major trends from this caseload. So we're at 243 cases in Easton as of yesterday. On the public health front, obviously Director Kennedy's department remains extremely busy. A lot of the reopening advisory boards report today, tasks enforcement with local boards of health. We have been trying to bring all the resources to bear as we can in the local area to help with contact tracing. The school nurses have been really helpful, working with Kristen directly on that. We continue to monitor and provide supports, long-term care facilities in town. The governor shortly before our last meeting issued an order for face coverings in Massachusetts that's now been more fully incorporated into the governor's safer-at-home advisory, which is the new version of stay-at-home that came out today. In a couple of days, I think, let's see, if so, on the 20th, the Board of Health has posted an agenda to meet, to consider requiring that businesses allowed to reopen in the Phase One plan from the Commonwealth. As part of reopening, there are these self-certification checklists that all employers need to adhere to for certain health and safety protocols for their employees and their customer bases. Or in the case of religious communities, houses of worship, which are included in Phase One. These are relatively prescriptive guidelines for things that all of these groups must do. However, the state is not mandating that those be submitted to anyone and leaving that more open. And so the Board of Health is considering adopting an order that folks who are reopening under the Commonwealth's guidelines that state that they have to take these steps anyway, that they provide a copy of their self-certification to the Board of Health, so that we are certain that folks are doing the right thing that we think that they will be doing. But this is important. The Board of Health will be considering it. And from my perspective, the contact tracing and emergency response burden falls on the local government. So I think it is appropriate that the local government is kept informed as folks do take these steps to try to safely reopen. Public safety remains fully operational. Fire departments executed more than 120 COVID transports to date with their uniformed safety protocols. Those buildings remain closed to public access for safety reasons. We continue to secure PPE. We're doing okay in that regard, whether it's through MIMA. National Guard has provided us with some PPE as well and standard procurement, as I indicated earlier. In total, I don't think Wendy's still on this call, but we have expended roughly 160,000 across town and school departments for supply purchases for necessary items to fight COVID in Easton. Townwide Municipal Services, so again, earlier today, Governor Baker released a reopening Massachusetts report, four-phase strategy to try to slowly and responsibly reopen businesses in Massachusetts while keeping a really close eye on hospitalization rates and other key data to keep everyone safe. The town's established a reopening working group for our own municipal services, as I had indicated. And we will be standing up one for kind of cross-sector analysis on that, on what we can be doing to safely support our businesses in Easton as they take steps to reopen in this kind of new world. DPW has procured and they are installing Plexiglas virus shields at all of our customer service intensive locations throughout town offices. Those are in the building now. We'll be continuing to keep an eye on that as we plan for eventual reopening of buildings for public services. But in that report issued today, one of the key factors there is that for office environments, the Commonwealth is still strongly encouraging services be provided or encouraging that office work be performed remotely to the fullest extent possible. Tom Clark is leading an elections-focused team to develop and implement health and safety protocols for the two June elections and town meeting we have coming. We have our COVID website, hotline, email, and financial assistance, COVID-related financial assistance for residents, and support for businesses. You know, speaking of financial supports, obviously the Eastern Food Pantry continues to operate out of the town offices. They've worked really well, Board of Health and Police Department to stand up a pretty incredible, basically contactless food pantry operation where they're putting staple foods directly into people's trunks, keeping everyone safe, keeping people distant, wearing masks. And it's quite an operation to see. It obviously is pretty heartbreaking to see a line of vehicles extending all the way to Route 138 every Monday, but it speaks truth to the economic strife that is befalling Easton and everywhere in the United States that sometimes, you know, can feel distant depending on your own circumstances. You look out the window and it looks like spring and it's hard to see the impacts of this sometimes. And, but they're real and there are people doing the right thing like the food pantry. So they've been doing a great job. Public Works remains operational. Our curbside textile recycling resumed last week. So this is just a brief summary. This is from the governor's reopening report. We're now, as of today, partially in Phase One, which they call Start. Certain businesses are able to reopen with restrictions and capacity limitations. You have the essential businesses that were already operating under the stay-at-home order, manufacturing, construction. There is another small roster of businesses able to begin opening if they meet the restrictions outlined in this report starting next week. And then they have additional phases again. So Governor Baker detailed that each of these phases is a minimum of three weeks long. And assuming that health data continues to trend in a positive direction as you reopen, the governor will make a decision on whether or not we advance into following stages. In previous iterations of this, there's been the point made, and this is similar to other states' opening plans, that if data starts showing that we're moving in the wrong direction, that you could in theory go backwards. I don't think there was explicit guidelines on that issue today, but we'll keep an open eye on that. But ultimately, these are state standards. Everyone received them today, including local governments with enforcement responsibilities. So we are all doing our homework and reading as much and getting as smart as we can. There's gonna be a lot of information coming out from regulatory agencies throughout the week for all of our businesses. For folks at home, I strongly encourage you to go to mass.gov/covid19. You can get the full report there. There's helpful rubrics for if my business is a restaurant, am I, yes or no? Can I do X or Y? So go to, go to the state's COVID website, mass.gov/covid19. There's a lot of good guidance there. A lot of credit to the governor's team on this. It's a good, detailed report that we'll all be digging through in the coming days and weeks. So that's it for me on just general COVID matters. I'm happy to take any questions if the board has any.
Well, I just want to make a comment when going back to the food pantry. So today is Ken Wood, the founder of the Food Pantry's birthday. And the Food Pantry had put out a request to honor Ken on his birthday. They were taking donations. They were originally looking to raise $1,000 and within a day, they surpassed that and changed the bar to $2,500. And I just looked and as of right now, they're at $5,160. So I just think that's remarkable. And it's a real testament to this community pulling together to help their neighbors. So happy birthday again to Ken and thank you to the people in Easton for supporting the food pantry. So Craig, were you trying to speak? I think you're muted.
Hold on one second. No, I just wanted to congratulate Ken and to the people of Easton, once again, extraordinary community.
You know, it's a, it's a lot of, a lot of work every time the governor makes a statement. Town Hall has to scramble to figure out how to implement some of those things in the beginning. You know, just as an example, even for building inspections. You know, we had somebody that reached out that they were waiting for an inspection and we had to create a policy. Well, I say we, I mean Connor, had to create a policy immediately to look at the safety of our staff and the safety of the person whose home they were going into. And, you know, multiply these policies times every type of service that we offer. It's a lot of work and you have one shot at trying to get it done right. So it's, the Town Hall staff has been super busy trying to make sure that we're thinking of everything possible and still, you know, protecting everybody's health as, as they're going along. So thank you for that, Connor.
No problem.
All right. Well, next on the agenda is discussion about state legislation for Senate Bill 2680, reducing quorum and other COVID-19 related items for annual town meeting.
Sure. So nothing formal on this because, and forgive me, I did not check because today was reopening report day. But to my knowledge, the Commonwealth has still not enacted this law that's moved its way through the Senate, which would provide city, or not cities, would provide open town meeting towns, the ability to reduce your quorum to 10% of standard, which would allow you to get your town meeting started with fewer people, which in theory could help you maintain maximum physical distancing, which from a health perspective is great. I wanted, because we're gonna start, the time pressure's really on here to, I think Mark asked, how ready are we? And I'm just being completely frank that we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do and it's helpful for me to have a general feeling from the Select Board that if this law's enacted on Wednesday, what your general thoughts are on the legislation as it is proposed and included in your packet, so that Kate Welch and I can have an SOE conversations with Town Council and Danielle and our operational departments to start planning for a town meeting. So I mean, really the kind of keynote feature of this legislation, which we talked about a little bit at your last meeting, is that it would allow a reduced quorum town meeting, which could help you have more people spread out more. But if you do that, the current legislation limits your warrant to financial articles effectively, which was feedback the board has already given, that you did task our office when trying to bring you back and it's on, next on your list, a significantly abbreviated warrant for town meetings, so that no matter what town meeting looks like, we have an effective and efficient warrant where folks can get in, participate, and get out safely without having to be there for seven hours.
So I know that sometimes we struggle to get a quorum for, unless there is a real controversial item, you know, on, on the warrant for the evening. I think that the school, the school and town budget is going to be, you know, people are gonna have a lot of questions and want to talk about that. I don't know if more than 100 people are gonna feel safe enough or comfortable enough to come out to that. Like you said earlier, we're not in the business of trying to discourage people from coming to town meeting. Really, we're all trying to drum up as much support and response for town meeting that we can. But I think safety has to be the ultimate priority here. You know, I wish there was a way that we could do it remotely because I think that, you know, it would be a nice way to try that out. But we're certainly not allowed to do it at this point. I think we're just gonna have to make a judgment call on, on safety being a priority when we can do this. The longer we wait aft, you know, after the first of the year, of the fiscal year, being in the 1/12 budget situation, the tougher it's gonna be. So if, if we can make it work for June 22nd and, and it's safe for people to go, I would support doing that. But I'd have to leave that up to your guidance, Connor, because you're the one who knows how to pull all that together.
Well, I suppose what I'm asking for is just general input on comfort level with a reduced quorum. If that's something that is allowed legislatively, but I have spoke to the town moderator. She said she would be supportive of whichever approach the board feels is appropriate. With the obvious caveat that we all have that we're not trying to discourage participation. I think we all try to do the opposite on a regular basis, but we want to, it would be a real shame for us to go through the planning for a town meeting and have 70 people show up cautiously with their masks and not be able to enact a budget.
I would definitely support the quorum reduction. Craig, what about, what do you think?
I, I think that, you know, it's, it's an interesting idea. I'm still more concerned about health and safety and the ability, if people are concerned about our, our budget and want to come, how do you limit the number of people that are gonna be, let's say, in the auditorium? How do you make sure that people are safe? What's the governor's direction on how many people you can actually, I mean, I'll, I'll just, I'll personalize it that our synagogue is, one of the houses of worship are, you know, open to, to begin the process of reopening, but only 40% capacity are allowed. So the question is, you know, is that gonna happen also with the town? If we, if we say, okay, what's the capacity at, at the auditorium and safe, safety first? What's the number of people that we actually could have in that building to keep them safe? And are there more people who want to be there? And that's one of the problems that, that I, that I perceive.
Yeah, so it, it, all of those are legitimate problems and this form of government is not designed to deal with this, frankly. This form of government's not designed for communities of 16,000 registered voters at all, really. But yes, we would need to follow similar precautions where we would have to mandatory, do mandatory spacing. If, for example, if you were going to be in the Oliver Ames High School Auditorium, we would cover, you know, X number of seats in between each available seat so that everyone outside of family members from within the same immediate household is at least six feet apart. Because the governor's Phase One start today does not get rid of the prohibition on gatherings of more than 10 people. Right? So there are exceptions, including for elections of that. But that doesn't mean that we would not want to strive to make it as safe as possible. So we would absolutely put our best forward there. And even if we were to go the route of a reduced quorum town meeting, we would be responsible and plan for far more people hopefully than who actually show up, which is what we typically try to do. So we would need to be looking at ensuring that we could fit 100 or 200 people, even if we're reducing quorum to 10, because we don't want to be in the business of turning voters away. We, as far as people wanting input, I mean, we could make it part of an advertising campaign for a town meeting to say, look, town meeting isn't gonna look the same as it does in normal years, just like nothing looks the same anymore. And here's our much shorter warrant. We can publish it well in advance. We can connect it to information resources that explain and more plain English than the warrant, what those articles do, and have Zoom meetings and remote meetings in advance of town meeting devoted basically to just talking about the warrant. So that people who are just curious can learn more about it and get a comfort level so that no one feels like they need to physically go to town meeting if their number one objective is just learning about what's on the warrant. So that people could feel informed as much as possible and get there, conduct their business and go back home and be safe. So that's, that's how we would approach that, Craig.
Con, I'm sorry. Just one more thing is that I, I'm just, I'm concerned, I have no idea where we're gonna be June 22nd in terms of health and safety, in terms of, of the COVID, the numbers of COVID cases, et cetera. And I would hate to be in a position where we, we, we open the doors and we say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have a town meeting and we're gonna, we're gonna limit the number of people and then have more people show up and say, well, I want to come in and vote. I want to be part of it. And not being, allowing those people to come in, I mean, that, that could be difficult.
It will be difficult. We don't have alternative outside of not having town meeting. Right? I mean, and when I say not have an alternative, I mean, alternative to the reality, it's difficult. We would plan for overflow with appropriate distancing. But yeah, if 700 people show up, there's, I can't imagine how we can do that safely.
No, we can't. But I, like Craig, I'm, I, I am wondering if there's a certain synergy that takes place whereby if, if 100 people can fit in there safely, keeping the appropriate distance, and there's 700 seats, let's say, well, you're not gonna have 700 people come in. Um, and there's seven hundred seats, let's say, well, you're not gonna have seven hundred people come in. But if you have a hundred and thirty, would it be okay? If you have a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty. Or enough people like myself, if I wasn't on the select board, that I'm over sixty, when it's getting kinda crowded, wouldn't I kinda leave anyway?
Maybe, but um, that's a, it's a decision none of us uh, really wanna be. Uh, pushing, right? We don't wanna design something that discourages people, but we're working with a five hundred year old form of government that. Is that is found foundational to how it works is everyone getting together in a confined space. So you couldn't have a, a way to legislate that's less congruent with the current health crisis. But the legislature has not given us an alternative. So we would, we would, we will be contingency planning for ma- picking a space where we can spread people out as much as possible. Where we can protect poll workers for checking in. Have extra uh, masks for folks who don't have any on their way in, keeping people distant. Uh, but I, there's no, there is no version of this that's completely foolproof. There's certainly no playbook for it.
I think one of the other benefits to reducing the quorum to ten is if we were, so a lot of times, you know, town meeting starts at seven. And you're waiting, you know, forty minutes to an hour for, to get to the quorum. So you have a lot of people there anyway that are just socializing and waiting until we hear there's a quorum. If the quorum was uh, ten, we could get started right away and people could. You know, as the meeting had already started, we wouldn't have that uh, milling around period where there's a, a lot of people waiting, so.
I um, I I think I'm all for a reduction. I think ten, personally, I think ten is too low. Um, I I think we don't have to go to ten percent, was was my reading. We could go as low as that if we wanted to, correct?
Correct.
And I think we have a, I always forget the exact number, but is it a hundred that's quorum?
Right now, your quorum is one hundred, yes.
And so I I'm concerned if ten people were making decisions, I would hope we could get more than that, just to have a little bit more of a robust engagement. I do appreciate Dottie's point though, um, but I personally, I would be uh, more in the fifty percent range. Uh, and then the only other thoughts are, I I agree with Craig, I would wanna make sure we took every step possible to make sure every person that wanted to participate and vote. Was able to as best as possible. Um, and if we had so many people show up, that forced us to call it if seven hundred people or a thousand or two thousand people showed up, given the magnitude. Of the budget discussion, uh, I would expect that we would have to pivot and find a solve to embrace that level of engagement given these times.
Yeah, Tom, just to be clear, the pivot there is a moderator has the ability to delay town meeting if there's a concern. And I, I'm, I am certainly, and I hope my actions the past few months have demonstrated this. Uh, always focused on how we can get solutions. I do not see how a seven hundred person activity is conducted safely, period. I do not.
I don't know either, and that's why we have to invest the time to work. I don't know if that's you give people assigned seats. And they reserve it and they come at a certain time slot and they have to start entering earlier. I don't, I I honestly don't know either Connor, and I think that's probably why we're having this conversation is to start that ideating. And maybe it can't happen June twenty second because we need more time because of that level of engagement. I doubt it, but again, um. Hopefully, we're able to find a nice way to fit two or three hundred people in in a methodical way, so that there's material, that's what their space, social distance. And we can have enough engagement to feel comfortable that the town's represented safely.
Mark, you still there?
I'm still here, yes. I have some thoughts I'd like to get out. Um, I agree with Tom. On the uh, quorum being close to fifty percent, fifty people. I don't think ten is representative of the community at all. And fifty is is pushing it, but uh, I do believe that we need to have uh, a town meeting. I know June twenty second is not very far away and things are still gonna be very precarious and safety is obviously of the utmost importance. If there's risk here, uh, we're taking leaps of faith and not knowing what's going to happen. But we have to make decisions now for, to pave the way for what could happen. If seven hundred people show up, I don't think that's gonna happen to be honest. But if that were to happen, um, the moderator reserves the right to delay town meeting, which I think is the appropriate safe call. And I'm willing to take that risk and that leap of faith with all this preparation up until June twenty second. Uh, I. That auditorium, maybe Stonehill's out of the question, that's very clear. Can be every other role by last name, alphabetical. Uh, in the gymnasium, you can have a TV for overflow with X's that mark it all down. Uh, I'm I'm not, you guys are very exceptionally obviously capable of figuring this out. And I do believe there's a way to figure out how to make it safely uh, for June twenty second for the community. Um, again, I don't think it's gonna be seven hundred people. I think you're gonna be not as big as you might think, uh, but we need to prepare. And I do think that uh, we need it for a variety of reasons. Um. If we don't have it, then we fall into a one twelfth budget and we're gonna lose four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I know it can be, you know, if there's a town meeting in July, it'll just overtake it. But four hundred and thirty thousand dollars represents a lot of people that could be laid off because of that four thirty. And I do think it's possible to have a safe June twenty second town meeting at the high school with precautions in place. And it will be difficult. And the fallback is the town moderator. She's not, she's not comfortable, she's not, didn't think it's safe. She has that authority. So that's, leave it at that.
So, so I guess the issue is, is the number of the, on the quorum. I I think that ten is, once ten are there, we can get things started. If we are stuck at forty five and we have to wait, you know. I just, I I don't feel like there's that big of a difference whe- whether we have ten and can start. Obviously, what what we've always done is if we see people out in the hall, uh, if if we have ten, it's not gonna be like, you know, the moderator, I'm sure is not gonna jump into it. But at least it gives us the safety net of having a lower number just in case. Um, if there were fifty people, I'm sure she would wait until the fifty people were in in and seated or sixty or seventy or whatever. That looked like it might be from um, from the perspective she, she has done that and shown that um, in the way she's moderated meetings so far. Even once we've reached the quorum, if there's lines of people outside, she still really doesn't start the meeting until we have people come in. So I I think ten is just being on the safe side. I I don't, you know, I I don't see a problem with that.
Is this, is this gonna be voted? How how's this gonna work?
Not tonight. There's no.
Not tonight, but it will, it will become a vote?
If if the law is enacted as written, the board would, oh, you need to consult with the town moderator. Uh, and I think that could probably be as simple as a letter from the moderator to the board. The board would take a vote. I think you need to post it for a week. Um. And that's it. The reason why I'm bringing it up now is that if a law gets passed in two weeks and you need to have the, an agenda posted for a week. Uh, you're two weeks away from town meeting. So I wanted to get a conversation moving now, uh, so that we are planning.
Good idea.
Alright, so wanna move on to the next item?
Yeah, that's fine. I think um, I understand uh, whether it's ten or fifty, the board is open to the conversation of uh, reduced quorum. Um, if that legislation is the case, is that accurate?
I agree.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So the second part.
Connor, I just wanna, wanna say that it's not a, it's, I'm not saying that you guys aren't gonna handle this, whatever comes up. Cause you've been showing us over the last few months that you guys really rise to the occasion no matter what. I'm just concerned about, as Chuck is, the people over the age of sixty who wanna come. Are afraid, you know, that that, those are, those are legitimate concerns.
They are, and and I would not, and I hope I did not come across as trying to uh, marginalize them.
Absolutely not, absolutely not. No, and I think we all share them.
I I agree with all of you, yeah. We all share the same concerns. We we are in a uh, a tough spot. Where uh, you know, you're having conversations about reduced participation. Which is directly conflicting with certain values. Uh, at the same time, there are very legitimate health concerns, particularly for folks who typically come to town meeting. Right? And the measures that we have, the tools that we have to try and help get information out there in advance are uh, not necessarily. Uh, as user friendly or as uh, standard to the toolkit that folks uh, with those health concerns may have. So we do take it really, really, really seriously. Um. And I, you know, I I love to have the discussion. I I, you know, town meeting has its quirks and has its challenges. Uh, but it's, it it is great to be able to have folks be able to basically call their executive branch to the mat. Uh, that directly, there's a lot of 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 positive things about it, but it is um. Certainly uh, really challenging to to square with these current health dynamics. So we will uh, you know, health and safety will be uh, top of mind for all.
Uh, can we go on to the next item, which is the uh, draft annual town meeting warrant review?
Sure, so um, this was not listed on your agenda as for articles for uh, inclusion and recommendation yet. I would think that'd be at your next meeting and given how small this warrant is, you could probably do it in one go. I just wanted to confirm, my office uh, took your feedback from the last meeting about bringing back a uh, basically really truncated warrant. That uh, only deals with things that absolutely must be done on a kind of fiscal year calendar. Which also kind of neatly fits into this legislation we're talking about. Um, the only items that there may be some interpretation there on is uh, a couple of acceptance statutes to establish tax relief programs for veterans. In my opinion, that obviously is financially related, but um, we'll seek some further clarification to make sure that would fit within the confines of the law once it's adopted. So this is a uh, very short annual town meeting warrant, uh, about sixteen articles. Uh, we're still working with council to possibly consolidate a few of those articles into one, um, so you might end up with about a dozen. Um, and if the board has it briefly, if you wanna follow along. Uh, article one is uh, to establish a uh, EMS uh, vehicle and equipment revolving fund for fire department. This would mirror uh, revolving funds that we do have. Um, I think for uh, DPW and general fleet management, where if we sell vehicles uh, through our uh, bidding process. We're able to immediately access the revenue generated by that and turn, put that back into our fleet with repairs. It's obviously important for emergency services. Um, that could likely be consolidated with the second article, which is the annual authorization of spending limits. For revolving funds, uh, which is important. Um, article three is elected official uh, compensation that is set uh, annually. Uh, article four, uh, we could probably uh, get rid of, uh, it's, it's rescinding a small amount of debt, it's not material. Uh, five is your annual chapter ninety spending, that's obviously important for our roadway work, that's funding from the state. Six and seven are uh, standard articles we include on any warrant, that's payment of bills from a prior fiscal year. Uh, and supplementing the current fiscal year budget. We don't have information on either of those yet. Uh, we typically don't at this part of the process and we leave those articles on the warrant and be uh, up until the night of town meeting. In the event uh, an unforeseen bill or something crops up that we must deal with. Same with article eight for capital, uh, for fiscal twenty. Article nine is to ratify the funding for the Eastern Patrol Officers contract, which uh, the board and the union uh, executed uh, earlier this year. Uh, right before a state of emergency, actually. Um, that is something that I am checking to see if we can just consolidate into the omnibus budget article. Uh, under the law, we have an obligation to support that, uh, because that contract is ratified and of course, we would. Uh, the funding's already been set aside in prior year fiscal budgets, so it doesn't have uh, a material impact on uh, the current. Deficit we're looking at for next year. Um, article ten would be the operating budget, which is obviously still very much up in the air. Um, eleven is the capital budget, uh, which is going to be significantly stripped down. I've directed the finance director to uh, work with department heads and bring back uh, basically emergency capital budget only. Uh, for uh, she and I to review with the capital planning committee in the coming weeks. To incorporate into this warrant that would uh, only prioritize those capital items that are directly related to emergency response. Things like ambulances and the like and everything else would be delayed. Um, till the next town meeting, not just from kind of a time sensitivity standpoint, but also an availability of funding standpoint. We are going to want to really, 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 really minimize the free cash that we spend on capital at this town meeting. Because we're going to need every dollar uh, we have as we head into this coming fiscal year. Article twelve, thirteen, fourteen, we think we may be able to consolidate into uh, one article. It's an acceptance of a variety of uh, veteran support legislation that uh, Coria Honan has brought forward. Um, to provide financial support uh, to our veterans. Uh, this was something that we were doing just to model off of the tax relief program that we were starting to build for uh, seniors. Uh, before the economy started to crater, uh, so although we are trying to keep a warrant as brief as humanly possible. If this is something allowable under the legislation, I think it's the right thing to do to pursue it, um, uh, and and move those programs forward. And then we have two CPA articles. One is the authorization of the CPA annual budget, which is clearly fiscal year related. And the other is uh, adopting the Affordable Housing Trust programs. We would delay all project specific uh, CPA articles to fall or whenever the other town meeting would be. That would include the Wheaton Farm Barn, the town hall funding. Um, those are more kind of project specific. We have spoken with the plane department who has connected with CPA. Uh, and I've spoken with DPW about the town hall uh, project. And that's not something that would have a material negative impact on the building if we delayed it a couple of months. Um, so in an effort to really trim your warrant down, we took those off. The CPA funding for Affordable Housing Trust programs, that's a really important one because obviously the Affordable Housing Trust. Provides support to uh, housing affordability programs, which are important during uh, a good economy. They're gonna be of particular import during this one and I, Dottie, I think you're you're uh, uh, much smarter than me on some of the new things that are being um. Enabled by state legislation, uh, including rent relief and things like that. Do you wanna just touch on that as far as it pertains to keeping that of a warrant?
Sure, um, there, there's the ability to use CPA funds to establish a rent relief program for people that are qualified. And there may also actually be the opportunity to be reimbursed for that funding from the CARES um, act from the federal government. So if we were able to um, work to to help support rent relief for some of the people in our community that were eligible for it. And get that money reimbursed by the federal government, I think that's a huge win. So uh, our planner, Ema, is working on that and uh, doing a lot of investigating. Um, you know, one of the things that has been a challenge with the Affordable Housing Trust is how to spend money. Uh, you know, to get the biggest bang for your buck and um, to be able to do this to help keep people in their homes in Easton would be a really big win.
So that's it. Um, I don't know if board has any feedback, uh, but really this is a a tightly tailored warrant. That focuses on um, critical financial matters. Uh, and uh, if the legislation allows it, a couple of uh, financial relief programs uh, for veterans and renters to try and help our community.
Oh, it felt good to me in terms of the right topics being covered, being sensitive to the amount of time.
Good to me too, Connor.
Alright, um, not, on to uh, nine.
Dottie, any, anything from um, Chuck or Mark or is it, if the board's comfortable, we will formalize this into a draft for the next.
Uh, I'm on board with it Connor.
Okay.
I'm on board.
Okay, uh, we'll formalize this and publish it as a draft in advance of your next meeting, uh, and get that circulating. Um, for the, as much as we can say the word normal, um. These days, a a normal process for a board to vote to include and recommend all of them at your next meeting and we'll get it to finance committee for the same.
Terrific. Alright, thank you. Um, and our item nine is a discussion and vote for three year interest rate reset for the loan from the Mass Housing Partnership Fund. To the B C Shovelworks LLC, Shovelworks One LLC and Shovelworks Two LLC, if you wanna hear that.
Sure, so um, this is related to a loan document that is about fifteen hundred pages long. So I'm gonna try to uh, pull the relevant bits and I know, I think Tom will get. pull the relevant bits, and I know, I think Tom will get me if I don't, uh, but, um, this is related to the two thousand and twelve loan agreement between the Town of Easton, specifically through its CPA fund, and, uh, B.C. Shovelworks Beacon Communities, uh, for the Shovelworks redevelopment. Uh, as part of the redevelopment and preservation of the Shovelworks, that loan from the town to Shovelworks, uh, stipulates that if Shovelworks changes any material terms to any of their other loan agreements with other parties, not including us, that the board has to consent to that. Um, it just says material terms. It does not say only terms that you would have an interest in if it were negative for the town, uh, and in this case, these terms would be positive for the town. So, um, specifically, uh, the question here, have, uh, as Beacon has submitted it, and there's a, a motion prepared that's been reviewed and okayed by council, is that as part of the financing for this project, Beacon, uh, borrowed approximately fifteen million from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership Fund, uh, in two thousand and fifteen, with a condition that the interest rate, which back then was just below five percent, it was four point six eight, would reset in two thousand and twenty, when Beacon extended, uh, that rate. And the extension that Beacon is choosing is three years at a significantly improved rate of two point eight eight percent. Uh, that's gonna reduce Beacon's mortgage payment to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership by twenty thousand dollars a month. The board's interest in that is twofold. One is that, as I already stated, your loan, the town's loan to Beacon, uh, stipulates that the board consent to material changes in other loans, even if they're positive. Uh, and two, it is of interest because by okaying this, uh, Beacon's mortgage would be reduced, and it would improve their net cash flow. Their net cash flow matters because, under the terms of your loan to Beacon, that is the revenue stream from which they make interest payments to the town on the CPA loan. Um, so the way that the loan from the town to Beacon is structured is that they make repayments on the four point three five million lent to them out of net available revenue. And by reducing one of their operating costs by twenty thousand dollars a month, that significantly increases the opportunity for increased net available revenue for Beacon to make interest payments to the town to be deposited in the CPA fund. In the past five years, those payments have ranged, in one year, there was no payment from net available cash flow, uh, and other years, it has ranged up to a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Uh, again, by reducing that mortgage by about a quarter million a year, that would have a positive impact in theory on their ability to make those interest payments. Um, the payments made so far are, uh, in accordance with the loan agreement, so nothing is amiss there. Um, I'm happy to kinda give a more broad view, Dottie, because I know that this loan between the Town and Shovelworks predates nearly everyone here. I think it was the first meeting I sat in on when I was interviewing for my first job here in two thousand and eleven, and I was trying to take notes on the project financing, and uh, my head was spinning. So, but, you know, nine years later, I kinda get it, but I'm happy to talk through it with anyone.
Well, I was not on the board then. Chuck, were you on the board then?
No.
No, so none of us were on the board at this, at this time, but I did follow it very closely, um, as this was going through, and it, it was one of the more complex, um, deals that actually this, that we won awards for, and the state holds up as the example. Uh, now Brockton's, um, planning department calls it the seven-layer dip, and they have a fancy name for it, but, uh, that's, that's kinda what this is, layering a lot of, um, a lot of borrowing and, um, and, uh, grants and different programs like that to be able to, to fund the project. So, um, in my opinion, it's, it's pretty, pretty short and sweet. There's a, there's no downside to us to vote for them to get a lower interest rate, and the, and there's a big upside for us to get paid faster. Is that the long and short of it?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for Connor on this?
Dottie, before you vote, just for the public certification, anyone watching this, I think it's good to just remind folks that the way that this loan from the town to Beacon Works, which was authorized by town meeting and the select board, is that regardless of net cash flow, the, uh, principal and interest at a rate of three percent to the town is due in full on March twentieth, twenty thirty-one. So this would allow us to get some more payments, uh, progress payments basically, as we move towards that, but, uh, that money is uh, spoken for, for repayment in full regardless of those progress payments in the loan. So if the board's willing, there's a, a, a mo- a, um, a vote that has been prepared. It is attached to your packet. Um, I would ask that that be the motion used, please.
Craig, do you wanna read that?
Voted that the Town of Easton Select Board hereby consents to the following documents in connection with the Ames Shovel Project and the Community Preservation Act loan made by the Town of Easton pursuant to the loan agreement between the Town of Easton as lender, and B.C. Shovelworks LLC, Shovelworks One LLC, and Shovelworks Two LLC as borrowers dated April eleventh, two thousand and twelve, the loan agreement, and other loan documents referenced therein. The first amended and restated promissory note by Shovelworks Two LLC to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership Fund Board. The note dated April tenth, two thousand and twenty resets the interest rate of Shovelworks Two's first mortgage debt from four point six eight percent to two point eight eight percent. The select board finds that the foregoing document is in the public interest, and the best interest of the Town of Easton consents to the execution of the note.
Can I get a second?
Second that motion.
All in favor, starting with Craig?
Audrey, yes.
Ruzard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is Town Administrator Notes.
Uh, I've talked to everyone's ear off enough. I don't have any. No contract awards to note.
We still have, um, some attendees on the call. Um, if anybody has any questions about anything they've heard tonight, uh, for public comment, raise your hand, uh, use the raise your hand feature, or send us a Q and A, and we'll recognize you. We appreciate having, uh, having attendees on the call, and it's increasing a little bit, uh, every time, so we hope more people join these. Alright, it doesn't look like any questions. Um, Craig, did you, uh, a proclamation that you wanted to talk about? You're on mute.
I apologize. I didn't realize I was muted. Okay. This is a Town of Easton proclamation. Whereas in nineteen seventy-four, United States President Gerald Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate emergency medical services practitioners in the important work they do in our nation's communities. And whereas the American College of Emergency Physicians and the National Association of EMTs have partnered together to recognize and celebrate the critical role that emergency medical technicians, paramedics, nurses, physicians, and ambulance services, deploying both ground and air transport units, playing and providing emergency medical services, responding to crisis on a daily basis, and in particular during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas the two thousand and twenty National EMS Week theme, EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing For Tomorrow, which has developed longer for the COVID nineteen crisis, is particularly meaningful now as the EMS community rallies to continue supporting those affected by this crisis, including their colleagues and family members, all while still responding to the everyday emergencies that continue to occur in their communities. And whereas our fire departments EMS, EMTs are on the front lines in treating illness and injuries requiring urgent medical response, and ambulance transport, and safeguarding their health, safety, and well-being of our community. And whereas the response of or of our emergency medical services clinicians includes responses by emergency medical technicians, paramedics, and whereas this week, hospitals throughout Massachusetts and our nation, local communities and medical personnel are coming together to honor the dedication of those who provide the day-to-day life-saving services by medicine's frontline. And whereas now more than ever, it is important that we honor and celebrate our EMT professionals who are supporting the health and well-being of our community. And whereas May seventeenth to May twenty-third is National EMS Week, which serves as an important reminder to recognize all that our emergency medical technical professionals do for our community. Now therefore, Connor Reed, Town Administrator of Easton, Massachusetts, hereby, hereby proclaims May seventeenth to May twenty-third, two thou- two thousand and twenty to be National EMS Week, and urge all the citizens of the Commonwealth community to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observation.
Thank you, Craig. It would be great to, um, get that on our social media, um, platforms to show our support in recognizing, um, the EMS personnel that we have. Um, really great that that falls this week. Alright. Craig, anything else?
That's it for me right now.
Great, Tom.
Uh, I would just like to reference that Saturday happened to have been also Armed Forces Day. Um, it's a special holiday for people all over the world to come together and thank the members of our United States Armed Forces. Uh, you might not know, but this was first conceived by President Harry Truman. A holiday was established in nineteen forty-nine, uh, and it was the creation of a single day of celebration that actually represented the unification of all five branches of the United States military, uh, under the Department of Defense. And I think, uh, much like then, there was a unifying opportunity. I believe this past Saturday is also a unifying opportunity for our community to recognize all that the armed forces, uh, do for us in today's day and age. Um, the armed forces is celebrated on the third Saturday of every May, uh, and this year, as I mentioned, it fell this past Saturday, so hopefully, uh, you had the opportunity to recognize it.
Thanks, Tom. And Chuck?
Yes, thanks. Uh, I have a message that was sent to us from Corey Honan, the Veteran Service Officer in regard to Memorial Day. He says, "As Memorial Day approaches, we would like to offer an opportunity to observe, honor, and remember our heroes from a safe distance. The Town of Easton Department of Health and Community Services is asking that all residents decorate a window or door of their home or business to show your support and respect for our heroes who have made the ultimate sacrifice. The decorations can be anything patriotic, such as an American flag, symbol of freedom, or a picture of a loved one, as well as anything meaningful to you and your family. Memorial Day is Monday, May twenty-fifth, but please feel free to set up displays before this date and leave them up until after this date, if you wish. Please send a picture of your display to Veteran Services Officer Corey Honan for a chance to be featured in upcoming newsletters or on our website. Thank you for your continued support of our military and veteran community."
Thank you, Chuck. And Mark?
Hi, Dottie. Um, I'd like to point out it is National Public Works Week. Uh, I don't know when it began. It seems as though everybody has a, a whole history to tell of, uh, the beginnings of each of these recognitions. I don't have that, and I apologize for that. Um, but the DPW is, I've said this from the beginning, I've said this from my time on finance committee. It's, it's an incredibly taken-for-granted department. Uh, they, they control, they maintain our infrastructure, our roads, uh, so much, our water supply, our, uh, waste supply, uh, and they're out there, they don't get the days off, uh, they don't get to stay home. If something breaks, they're, they're fixing it, um, and they're just simply maintaining. And not to mention, if you've ever run across some of our DPW guys there, they're some of the greatest guys out there. Uh, you can stop, we can talk, have a conversation with them, and, um, they're just a really great group of guys. And so, uh, I just wanna point out that it is also National Public Works Week, though I don't know when it began.
Thank you. I think we all, uh, we all agree that, um, Public Works makes it happen. Hashtag Public Works. So, um, the last thing, I just wanna underscore, we talked about it a little bit earlier, but just to remind people um, about elections, that, you know, voting can be made by mail. Um, check out the Town of Easton's social media and website for an application. Um, you fill out the application online, and a ballot is mailed to you, and you ma- mail it back or drop it at the town hall. It couldn't be easier. Um, the town election is Saturday, June twenty-seventh at the high school from ten to four. Um, the state election to Phil Shauna O'Connell's house seat for precinct six only is Tuesday, June second, at the town offices. And, uh, we said it a few times, that town meeting is scheduled for Monday, June twenty-second. Um, that's subject to change, and we thank everybody, um, on the staff for being creative and hardworking and finding a way to, to make it safe and, um, and available to everybody in town. So, um, with that, um, if there's nothing further, we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to go into executive session, um, under purpose three of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Subsection Twenty-One-A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, with respect to all town bargaining units. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. So, um, we'll take a mo- a vote, a roll call vote, a motion, a second, and a roll call vote to go into executive session, not to return to open session.
So moved.
Second it then.
Craig, I'm sorry, Chuck and Craig, and then the roll call vote, Craig?
Audrey, yes.
Ruzard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes. Great. Thank you, everyone.